Can I get everybody's attention? Thank you so much for being here tonight. Graham City Council, March 8th, 2022 meeting. Going to call the meeting to order. We welcome you tonight. If you could all please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. Now we'll ask for Bonnie Whitaker and the Alamance County Clerk of Court, Meredith Edwards, to come to the front in order to give the oath of office for our newly appointed council member, Bonnie Whitaker. There's a delay in our special presentation tonight, and we will add that in later on in the meeting to recognize Graham retiree Paul Ingrick. So if we could address the next city council agenda item, the consent agenda, to approve the minutes of February 8th, 2022, regular meeting to approve a proclamation declaring April 29th as Arbor Day in the city of Graham, to approve the North Carolina records retention and disposition of 2021 general and program records scheduled for local government agencies to approve the following members to the recombin Appearance Commission Tree Board, starting on April 1st, 2022, for Clark Baldwin, term ending June 2024, Judy Hall, term ending June 2023, Bernadette Consulman, term ending June 2024, Carmen Laramore, term ending June 2024, Cheryl Ray, term ending June 2023, to award a contract in the amount of $956,937 to Triangle Grading and Paving Inc. for the water and sewer improvements projects on Long Avenue and Albright Avenue. This was the low bidder in an open RFP that we held to approve a petition for a voluntary contiguous annexation for approximately 57.23 acres located on Lacey Holt, GPIN 8893686572 and 8894906303, to approve a resolution requesting the city clerk to investigate sufficiency. To approve a resolution fixing date of public hearing for April 12th, 2022, on question of annexation, to approve the city of Graham's historic commission to purchase plaques for the historic buildings using the funds raised by Graham Historical Society, to approve the following tax releases of 419.29. And I need a motion, or if there's anything that the council members would like an item to be pulled off the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I make the motion that we approve on this.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sure. They were already members, and we combined the groups into one committee. So they're not new. They were already existing members of one or the other.
And there are no additional members who were?
No, no.
And how many positions totally are there on the recombin?
I believe seven.
There are still two vacancies.
There are still two vacancies.
All right, thank you.
Because I believe the tree board had...
It had seven.
But it used to be like 15 or something. And they could never fill those positions. So and then what we ended up having, by combining them, we still didn't have enough to fill the seven positions. We'll now move to the public hearings, the rezoning of Cherry Lane. Go to the staff on this, but I do believe the applicant has requested to withdraw both the rezoning and the annexation applications.
That's correct, Madam Mayor. So that would apply to items number 1, 2, 3, 6, 7, and 8 on your agenda. And I believe you could take those all in one motion to accept the withdrawal of the petitions.
I hear a motion from the council.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to allow the withdrawal of the applicant's request for items 1, 2, 3, 6, 7, and 8.
Do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Madam Mayor, at this time, I would like to make some comments in regards to what we have just voted on.
Sure.
Good evening, everyone. What you have here is some thoughts that Councilman Parson and I have worked on in regards to the development out at the Commerce Park or the Cherry Lane area. And why you asked, do we need to make this address? Well, it appears, if you look at it, the development today for the Commerce Park has been all distribution warehouses. And as a community, we can either let events dictate our direction, or we can set the vision and direction to address who or what comes here. In reviewing our plan for the Commerce Park, when you read through it, well, if you're not aware, the Commerce Park is 1,100 acres. It was designated as Commerce Park through the agreement of Meban, Graham, and Alamance County. And the impression, as I read through information, it seems that we have an apparent lack of a comprehensive, coordinated, and unified long-term vision for the Commerce Park. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan has two short paragraphs that talk about the Commerce Park. All it says is, we want to bring industry here. Now, the problems that we're currently, that have been raised about the development out there on Cherry Lane have involved truck traffic, noise, light pollution, and the aesthetics. Everybody, you know, the love of the rolling farmland out there and such. But right now, you know, it's whatever is put forward by our developer. You know, part of it is zone I-1. And if you make an application that fits into the definition of terms and the ordinance, you're allowed to develop there. So there are gaps in our current developmental ordinance, especially in regards to industrial development or the use of the planned unit development for industry. So that is why we have got this unique opportunity to set a direction for Graham for the next 15, 20 years. At this point, Joey would like to address the rest of it.
Basically, we all know that we're going to develop that land at some point. So we need to have a vision for what that land's going to be. You know, the vision is we want to have a long-term plan where industrial, commercial, and residential communities can coexist and maintain the livability of the existing residential communities and be viable for future industrial and commercial development. And the mission moving forward, we want to develop a long-term plan that will coexist with existing residential development, develop a technology overlay for Cherry Lane with a focus on information research and biomedical technologies as defined in the Comprehensive Plan Unit Development. And review the existing development ordinances for industrial and commercial, and if necessary, establish standards for variances that address setbacks, burns, lighting, landscaping, fencing, signage, just the overall aesthetics to help it be more coexistent with the existing neighborhoods. And, you know, you know, if we don't develop it, you know, our tax rates from residents will go up. That's where we're going to get our...
Yeah, the bottom line is we can take charge of our direction, or if we don't and things just happen, the consequences will be higher property taxes to pay for the services that we currently have and expect here in Graham. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And one more thing. I think, you know, I know Bobby and myself, and I'm sure I speak for us as a council. We want input from the communities to make sure that we can develop this where it is coexistent for everybody. So just...
Yeah, we will have public hearings to allow you to speak. This is not going to be done in a vacuum. So when that public hearing is established or set up, please come, because if you're not present to voice your position, then so be it. Then you live with what, for those who came, what they had to say. We will, you know, we want to do what's best for Graham and as well as the citizens of Graham.
So to that point, appreciate both of y'all working hard on trying to come up with a vision. One of our strategies in the 2035 plan, the strategy 2.4.1 in regards specifically to the NC Commerce Park, says develop a plan for the employment district in order to maximize economic growth within the area, line plans, and investment with efforts to recruit and grow strategic business opportunities in the NC Commerce Park. The desired pattern there is industrial districts should have limited setbacks with the front of the property line and between adjacent industrial uses in order to use the land and the infrastructure efficiently. These users should be heavily buffered from residential neighborhoods, parks, and open space and streams. So this coming from our 2035 plan, when we start having these meetings, this is the first time that our council has... Now, we've actually seated all the council members on the council since the time we were elected. And even though we didn't have a fifth council member, we've been working really hard on this. And at the same time, the Cherry Lane project was just coincidentally coming up, and we were kind of taking things from the 2035 plan and already seeing like where there are gaps. And I appreciate the other council members and the staff. Everybody has hours and hours and hours worth of work, and we'll continue to have a lot of time invested in trying to come up with a vision that's more detailed so that when developers do come, they'll know exactly what we want. And we have to be more proactive rather than just reactive. And I think we'll, in the end, we'll get happy developers, we'll get happy neighbors, and hopefully, the Scots, when they have that property out there developed, they'll be very happy with the end result. We want to listen to all the stakeholders, the Scots, the developers, the people from Cherry Lane, the residential neighbors, and the farmers that are even out there, the people. I think they're doing a renovation of the historic barn across the street that's going to be an event venue. So I appreciate everybody's input, and I hope when we publish those public meetings that you'll come and attend, because your input will result in a really good project for Graham moving forward. On the next item on the agenda is the rezoning, item number four, rezoning of 302 North Maple Street, 203 207 213 West Market Street. Going to ask Justin Snyder, our Planning Director, to give us some information about this agenda item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we have a request to rezone approximately 1.15 acres of property, and encompasses addresses 302 North Maple Street, 203 207 213 West Market Street. And the request is to go from R7, which is high-density residential, to a B1 Central Business District. The general area is subject to the potential rezoning is comprised of numerous older homes, mostly in poor to fair condition, as well as a mixture of vacant buildings and vacant lots. Because the B1 is a permissive district with a variety of low-intensity commercial office and even mixed-use residential uses permitted, it does present a rather intriguing redevelopment scenario to try to spur infill and redevelopment that would tie to the downtown business district. But the biggest challenge is to address off-street parking and ensure that the uses proposed are compatible with the surrounding residential. The property is listed on the future land use map as downtown residential, and that lists among its uses neighborhood-oriented commercial, small professional offices, live-work units, and home occupations, provided they do not generate excessive traffic and parking. Given the location and likely development patterns in the area, central business would be a compatible use in staff's opinion, provided that the off-street parking needs can be met to serve the proposed uses. Now, there is also something to be said about coming in with a conditional zoning classification that could also help address some of these concerns that we've heard in the past regarding the need for like conceptual site plan and more specifics on what's going to go in than simply rezoning it to a B1 where it's wide open, anything within the standards of the B1 would apply. So at this time, it is served by public water and sewer. The area does have older infrastructure, so that's something that needs to be considered. I believe the water lines, sewer lines are significantly aged. I believe the storm drain system is also significantly aged. So it's likely that there's going to be some onsite detention required for any net increase in runoff and surface discharge. So those are just things to keep in mind as you consider this application. And I believe the applicant is here tonight.
And I'm sorry, could you repeat that last part, Justin, in regards to the runoff?
Yeah, so if there's any net increase in runoff from what's existing, there would have to be some sort of onsite detention, whether it be a dry detention pond or something. That's per our engineer.
Would that create any kind of safety issue?
I'm not sure. I don't think so. But our engineer is here tonight if he wishes to ask me any questions.
So this is a public hearing. If there's anyone here who'd like to speak on the proposed rezoning? Jason. I think you're the only one that raised their hand.
Jason Cox, 200 North Main Street, Graham. In light of the fact that there are a number of new council members, I thought it might be slightly helpful to kind of step backwards and help the council understand how we wound up where we are and sort of where we began. So if you'll forgive me for a little bit of added time, I thought it would be appropriate to go backwards, to go forward, as I mentioned, and provide some history. The original request that we are here about was actually prepared in June of 2021 and was first considered the July 20th, 2021 meeting. So as it stands, we have worked on this application for nearing a year in total. Due to differences in the city ordinance by the prior planning director and our current planning director, we were unable to come back with this smaller revised development project as prior requested for six months. So in short, we would have been here six months sooner had there not been sort of a difference in staff interpretation during the turnover. In fact, you actually have had a recent text amendment on this topic, which the planning board unanimously approved to try to clarify that language. So the request before you tonight was specifically developed to address the concerns which had been raised previously by city council last year, namely being a reduction in size to one-third of the prior request, as well as the removal of two parcels, which included two homes that members at the time felt may contain some historical value. So in short, we have a project of roughly one-third the density and size of what had been previously considered. Since that time, as I mentioned, we know that there have been changes in the council itself. And in a prior planning board meeting, it was stated that the city council had expressed no interest in approving changes to current B1 boundaries. While we realize this is an awkward position to be in, to be at a council meeting, which the planning board seems to view as fruitless, we felt that coming forward now and letting you discuss the application in its current form was the best way for us to gather your current feedback on the project, which I believe is of long-term benefit to everyone, citizens, visitors, both current and future, as well as the city itself. It's my hope this project could be looked at in retrospect as an appreciated and valued part of both downtown and its surrounding neighborhoods. And I welcome the chance tonight to begin working towards that goal with each of you. To benefit that discussion, I felt it might be helpful to provide some insight on current conditions on the ground, so to speak, namely to provide context around this request and why we believe it is an appropriate step forward for the city at this point in time. First, in terms of location, we'd actually currently already have a wide variety of mix of uses surrounding these parcels. In fact, the variety itself reflects the history of this area as a transitionary mixed-use corridor. These uses in terms of zoning nearby include industrial, I-1, directly across the street, as well as 180 feet to the west in the form of perilous auto and body repair. There's also multifamily, which itself was formerly industrial in the form of a night of loss some 40 feet south. Across the street on the southwest corner of Maple and Market is a currently abandoned commercial building, built directly against the sidewalk, much in the B1 form that we see today throughout downtown. And lastly, B1 itself sits just 80 feet to the southeast. Now, by contrast, the most recent parcel that I was able to find, which appeared to have been rezoned to B1 in recent history, was approximately 200 feet from the closest then-existing B1. The only difference being that, sorry, what this reflects in short is that Graham itself historically did not subscribe to a rigid separation of uses in and around the historic portion of downtown. This completely makes sense since a comfortable walking distance was the measurement used and needed access in the past. As is often the case, we're beginning to realize that they had it right back then, namely that having walkable rather than automobile access to shopping, to workplaces, and to housing is a desirable living format. What we have learned is that, in fact, we went too far. Instead of separating grossly incompatible uses such as belching factory smoke stacks from a house, a school, or a park, we created districts that require a car just to go about one's daily life. In respect to off-street parking, as it was brought up, obviously, any growing comes with pains and questions and concerns, which I'm here to try to answer to the best of my ability. First and foremost, it's important to note that no project gets built unless it can get insured, unless it can get funded. No lender funds a project that they don't believe will be successful. That said, what I would like to point out is that this project, in terms of its location to existing parking, both on and off-street, is compatible or, in fact, even closer than existing B1 parcels. Namely, from the southeast corner of this parcel, it is 340 feet to public parking, approximately one minute. As a comparison, the Walmart on Graham-Hopedale Road comprises 400 feet walking from the front of the building simply to the end of the primary rows, not including additional parking further out. Bringing it back specific to downtown, though, what we see are the following locations, which are in fact further from public parking than the parcel in question. First, one of my own businesses, Press, residing at 133 North Main, is 370 feet from the closest public parking. It is also, in fact, closest to one of the most heavily-used parking lots in the city. Greenham McClure, which represents the center point of the western side of the 100 North Main block, sits 380 feet from its closest parking. Graham Cinema, representing likewise the center of the eastern side of the 100 North Main block, resides 440 feet from its closest parking lot. In addition, I'd like to point out that the accessible public parking for this particular location, both being closer than those named, is actually one of the least utilized portions of parking that the city operates. Last up, I'm completely aware and understanding of citizens' concerns, residents' concerns about having a good neighbor. We believe that this project, first and foremost, directly matches the city's own desires and vision in terms of the future goals of land use and how it meets the needs of citizens, visitors, and businesses. To emphasize some points from the Comprehensive Plan itself, we note that it calls out to develop a compact mixed-use and focused pattern of growth. It says Graham will focus compact development and promote infill development and redevelopment, which includes downtown and future mixed-use activity centers that will service focal points and centers of activity. This is the very goal that this project seeks to fill. In addition, it talks about increasing travel choice among residents and visitors, and that we will facilitate alternative travel that is organized around something other than that of the automobile. That is also a goal of this project in and of itself. Our goal is to see that the people who work or live here don't have to get in their car every day for their daily life. We think that that's contributory to the neighbors. We think it's contributory to the city as well. Specific to neighbors' concerns, we've heard a number of concerns. I've heard them both personally, as well as at prior meetings. We seek to address them to whatever degree we possibly can to mitigate them. We've heard concerns from those who are not direct neighbors but live or own property in surrounding areas about the value or appeal of their property. I understand that concern as it is one that I also share when it comes to property that we own or properties such as this that we consider purchasing. Will we have good neighbors? Will they take care of the property and be a positive contribution to the streetscape that we walk along? Will they be a net benefit or a net detractor from our daily life? What I can state with near certainty, and what all research shows, is that compact, small-scale infill development, especially by those who live and work in the area itself, inevitably creates benefits for its surrounding property owners and neighbors. I can also say that, without question, any development here would be a significant improvement of the streetscape compared to what we currently see along those corridors. Sadly, much of that area of Graham has seen disinvestment and decline over the last several decades. It's my hope that this project can be a catalyst and create other opportunities for additional investment in the area. It's my hope that this project can be a catalyst and create other opportunities for additional investment in the area. In that vein, I welcome feedback, um, I believe, uh, Mr. Chin mentioned vision setting. Development desperately and very much wants exactly that.
Why not rezone B two or con- conditional B? Everything that you find as a defined use in B one, you find under B two and also with, under the conditional business.
I don't know that it's the B one and B two have all the same uses, to your specific question about B two. Unfortunately, our current ordinance, I believe that the planning director at one point has discussed the need for possible unified development ordinance to kind of modernize. Our table of uses, specific to B two, our B two as it currently reads would be a very real detractor to our neighbors. It requires um seas of parking lots, uh, significant setbacks, to be honest, it's built for strip malls and convenience stores, neither of which is the intention here.
Well, like I said, if you look under C B and cross over from all the uses under B one. You can find that under conditional B. The only exception is B one excludes off-street parking.
Understood.
Appreciate um your presentation, I think um. Coming here, um, asking for what the council's um vision is for. For development, I think is 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 a very smart move, I think that um. You know, asking your neighbors what they want to see there, I think is very smart, I I I. There's not a developer that comes to Graham that I do not strongly encourage them to talk to neighbors and have neighborhood meetings. And a lot, there's always a lot of resistance to that because people sometimes don't want that feedback, but I believe that. You know, controversy and and. You know, delayed is just controversy multiplied, so just deal with it and 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 get to the, to the root of what the. What the issues are and what the neighbors want to see in that area. I championed a um. Conditional zoning twenty years ago because we had a um, a BJ's um. Jewelry store here in downtown Graham, and they wanted to move right here on the corner. Uh, across from the municipal building um in a residential house. And the only option to them was strict rezoning. And you can understand that the neighbors didn't want a ABC store, liquor store, convenience store. You know, having to deal with parking on the street, having to deal with um noise, whatever their their concerns were. And so, we ended up losing that, that um really um profitable and very. They were very well-liked in the community and the business community, and they ended up uh moving to Burlington into downtown Burlington. Um, and right after that. Graham became more proactive rather than reactive. And so we went out and found conditional zoning and what that allows. The, the business owner to do is to convert that home into a specific use. And that at any time they stop using it for that purpose, it reverts back to residential. And, you know. The concerns that I think neighbors have, the concerns that the city council has. And staff have is that. You, when you don't see exactly what's going to be there, it breeds fear. And with conditional zoning, it's site-specific, you know exactly what you're going to get, especially if you're building something new. And nothing's kind of left to chance, you've gone through technical reviews, so to speak, and. And the, the staff has had an opportunity to look at it for lighting and. And um noise and buffering and landscaping and all of these different things that can be worked out ahead of time. And you can come into a, a, a meeting with the city council with the neighbors endorsing your, your project rather than fighting you on it. So, um, I don't know. I don't know the reason why uh any would, anyone would want to waste their time, I guess, and the money. Associated with doing something, because I, I think that if you bring a project to us through conditional rezoning. And ask for conditional rezoning and you bring a good project to us, I think. The council would welcome it with open arms, and I think the neighborhood would welcome it with open arms, but. I think you have to do a little bit of due diligence in, in the, in the first part in order to get that. And I know sometimes that's difficult, but um, have you talked to the neighbors at all to get their feedback?
The ones who have reached out, I've been able to reach, it's also a unique situation. Approximately ninety percent of all neighbors to this parcel are actually the same parties. They own the surrounding property, the only actual neighbor from a contiguous parcel would be the vacant properties owned by Mr. Drumright to the west.
And and what do they want to see done?
I'm here on their behalf for this project.
So, so Mr. Drumright, he spoke against it then?
No, I'm saying the only neighbor that is not also an owner of one of the adjoining parcels that has had interest in this project proceeding. Is Mr. Drumright, all of the other neighbors that surround, actually touching these parcels are owners who were part of the original larger request. Interesting seeing this occur as a first phase.
Okay, well. When I just look at the downtown residential um district, I know that they encourage rehabilitation of. And, you know, of historic buildings and things like that, I understand that some of the houses that. I think you're looking to tear down the mill houses, right? And I think Jerry, the previous mayor, was very concerned about Mr. Smith's house on.
This is not in.
Right, and that's not on, on that, so I appreciate you um taking that feedback from him and and coming up with something different. But I do see that downtown residential areas are located in and around the city historic downtown area, the principal use is predominantly detached, single-family homes. And so, I mean, with what homes are selling for right now, which is the highest I've ever seen in my lifetime. I mean, you building homes there or redeveloping that for, for homes, would that not be profitable? As a developer and then also keep the neighbors happy?
I couldn't speak specific to the profitability, but to be honest, it would be a waste of the opportunity that that parcel presents for the future. Purely single-family in an area that is seeing the highest values it has ever seen explicitly. Highlights that we have a housing affordability and housing supply issue. That really desperately needs to be addressed, especially in light of the fact that unfortunately, those who will be pushed out of these neighborhoods. Will not be the people who, or sorry, the people who will be forced out of these neighborhoods unfortunately will be the people who have historically lived here. Uh, the reality is much of our growth, especially in areas walkable to downtown. Are parties that are moving predominantly from either out of state or from eastern uh directions throughout the triangle. Their buying power is signific- significantly higher than that of the average citizen of Graham. So unfortunately, they can afford ever higher prices because to them, these are cheap prices. But what it does mean is unfortunately, housing for those who live here and make current incomes in Alamance County will not be able to remain. One of my goals is to make sure that a person who leaves and comes back after college and marries. Might actually be able to live in the same neighborhood that their parents lived in, and to be quite honest, unless we address some of those issues, that will no longer be the case. Also, to answer your question, I have no desire to build cookie cutter duplexes in a line. Yeah, I don't find that visually appealing, and I don't find that to be the best use of the properties.
I, I didn't ask for duplexes, I asked for single-family detached homes, I mean, they're. You know, I just literally, there's realtors that are out there building their own homes and selling them. So, I, I see there's an opportunity there to um. To redevelop that block from maybe um old mill houses that have kind of been run down over the years and not kept up. And if you took that lot and built a home, you would both get. You, you would be profitable as a developer and you would also have the opportunity to keep all your neighbors happy and keep it residential. But if, if there's something else you want to do, I, I guess, I think the neighbors want to see more specificity, I think. And I think the council does too. Do you have a plan specific other than just saying B one, and I don't know. I mean, if you built something B one, you would be able to build all the way to the, to the lot line. So, no setbacks whatsoever and no, no on-site parking. Would be on the street.
Well, no, again, I've already called out that there's available parking uh in closer distances in existing B one that exists. We have vacant off-site parking available already closer than current B one parcels. That was one of our intended goals, was to make sure that we utilize city infrastructure appropriately, I know it was discussed, water, sewer, et cetera. Uh, I will respond to the planning director and say, I promise that however old those water and sewer lines are, the ones under Port Square are no better. That is a B one problem in its entirety, as I'm sure the council is aware. But the reality is the goal of this was to, in fact, match the vision of the city of Graham, namely the goal of mixed use. Namely in the goal of walkability and reduced vehicle trips, less, to be blunt, wasted land for asphalt.
Do you have any? Comments?
Did, did I hear you're right that Mr. Drumright was not on board with this?
I personally didn't hear that he ever really expressed whether he was or wasn't, he came, he discussed at length. This was many months back, I want to be clear about that. Um, and mostly just discussed his history as a property owner of the surrounding parcels and never, to me, gave any real clarity as to what his. I know that he's obviously, as an adjoining property owner, been noticed at least five times since then. That's the best I can speak to, sir.
And you got Mr. McBay across the street, owns a property.
I have not spoken to him across the street, no.
And if we're going to be parking on their property or on front of their property, I think you should have.
Wouldn't, again, off-street parking, I'm speaking of, is public parking lots are controlled by the city. I'm not talking about.
On-street parking.
I mean, there is, the city of Graham allows on-street parking in many, many of its streets, but my focus is not on that. City of Graham, quite some time back, created a resident parking permit process managed by the city. So that the city can also make sure that at no time do we have a situation where those permits um exceed the, the capacity of existing infrastructure. So there's already a process to address this that was created by the city.
Okay, I'm just.
Yeah, no, absolutely, yeah.
Kurt did call me and, uh, I actually, I'm surprised he's not here tonight, he, he was. I, I thought he expressed that to you, Jason, that he wasn't in favor of.
He hasn't ever spoken to me, ma'am. My number is on a top of everything.
Okay. You have any comments?
If, if I could ask just some follow-ups for clarity, so that I can take sort of that direction. Uh, Mr. Chin, I know you had spoke about um B one and parking. I guess my question, and really to all council members, what does the council view as the requirements for a parcel to be rezoned to be one? What needs to exist in order for that to be an option, I suppose is the question. Because I know that this is not the first B one that's come for council recently, and I imagine it will not be the last.
Well, I would say that B one exists as a result of no zoning existing at the time that B one was built. So I think, you know, B, B, that's why B one is this historic district, it predates zoning. And so, um, I haven't really seen other. Uh, I haven't seen an extension of B one in other cities either, and there's not this big. Expansion of B one because it does lend to these problems of no parking, um, no setbacks. I, I haven't really seen that in other cities, have you seen that in other cities?
The growth of downtown districts throughout the country, there's growth of downtown districts. Um, and actually, I mean, I, I mentioned earlier, the only rezoning I could find was on Elm Street. Which was a further distance than the, than existing B one that was several years ago, so we have in relative recent history expanded.
On Elm Street, East Elm Street or West? Two sixteen East Elm Street.
I believe that's addressed, but I know if the planner wants to pull up the, the map, he can pull up the zoning map.
Is that beside the parking lot?
Correct.
That, is that your, is um Mr. Kimery the, the um, a partner in this project or no?
No, I'm sorry, you mean the two sixteen Elm? No, the one I'm speaking of was rezoned years ago. It's next to one of the municipal parking lots, but at the time it was a B two or whatever, and it was rezoned to B one. Um, and it, as I mentioned in my earlier comments, it was significantly further from existing B one at the time.
Okay. Well, Lee's here, maybe, did, did it get resigned when you were on the council, Lee? Okay. Any other questions? Any questions, Bonnie?
Oh, ma'am.
Do we have a, a motion?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get that mentioned direction. You had also mentioned uh come with, with, with a project, could you elaborate on what would constitute come with a project?
I mean, I, I would like to see you come back with a project that, that has conditional rezoning, so we know exactly what is going to be built. Especially when you're going to be right in the middle of a residential area with a commercial business. Building or multifamily building or whatever you're planning on doing there. I think.
What kind of specificity, as you, you pointed out?
It's your property, sir.
Well, I, I, but it's your permission, so that's why I'm asking for direction.
Conditional zoning. We request.
Specific.
Some s- specificity as to what we are approving. Rezoning to B one, it's anything you want to put there. That i- if it falls under B one in the definition of uses. We don't want to tell you how to do what you need to build. You're a builder, you have a vision, put it down on papers so that we and your, and the neighbors will know what you're building. We are asking too much.
I mean, when you're going to an, into an existing neighborhood, zoning and, and just to simplify things in my term. In my, in my opinion, it's a good neighbor policy, right, when you're going into an existing neighborhood. You wouldn't want to build anything that hurts your neighbor, and that's what um zoning exists for, right? Is to ensure that you're not doing anything to hurt your neighbor. And when you're going into an existing neighborhood, we have to protect existing neighbors that um had a. Certainly a belief that. If they're, if they build a residential house there, that they'll have a, and, and it's all zoned R seven, that beside there would be R seven. And um that multifamily wouldn't be there, that a business wouldn't be there, that they wouldn't have to deal with. Bars or, or um. Convenience stores or parking on the road or any of those kind of things. And uh where some neighbors may not, may, may be fine with that, um, because they live in the downtown and they welcome that. So, um, I think it's really just trying to find that good. It's much easier to sell your project to the existing neighbors and to any city council, regardless of who's sitting up here. If we know exactly what we're voting on, but, but to just come and i- if we didn't have the option of conditional business zoning. It, it made it really difficult for this council to rezone things. But with that tool, I think it makes it very easy for you to get what you want. And for us to also protect the existing neighborhood, because we're here as vessels to protect the existing neighborhood and the existing citizens. We want growth, we welcome you to bring a good project to the city of Graham. That everyone in that neighborhood will, will um benefit from. If you're able to, to build something there that is valued, it only raises property values around that area, so. Um, and encourages more redevelopment of that block, so, um, I don't. We're not opposed to you developing, we're just, um, I think. My personal opinion is I want to know exactly. What you're going to um ask the neighbors to accept. Is there any other comments from the floor? Yes. Sure.
Oh, I need to get out of her way, I'm sorry.
Nikki Smith, four oh two South Maple Street. So if you're talking, you know, high residential districts and things like that, one for the city council to keep in mind. What you do on North Maple potentially may affect South Maple. So as people age out of their homes and um other developers come into town. Then you have to be sensitive and have the foresight to understand how South Maple also has. A high residential district um with people who own their homes, so the, if I were to count, it's probably a. Sixty forty split of owners versus people who rent. And although there may not be a lot of children on that road, I do have one. And we would love for our son to walk to school, but it's like Jason, you said it. And we would love for our son to walk to school, but it's like Jason, you said it's not walkable, so. Any, this is a two, you know, a both and kind of comment. So any development that will bring in sidewalks that are walkable. Are fantastic. Any developments to me that are sensitive to the historic nature of the downtown. Fantastic. So a concept of a plan of what would come in that may match. Somewhat the architectural value of what is already existing. One would think would be appropriate. Especially if it ties into, like you mentioned, Onida Mill, the textile, the. Um, in independent um, business like micro breweries, coffee shops, things like that. To make it walkable and more enticing for people to live and walk downtown. For you, the parking lot that you're talking about, is that the one across Main Street or the one?
It kind of circles around, but it's right there.
Okay. Okay, cause I was thinking if it's the one across the main street by the crematorium. Uh, no, there's another, what is it now that's the um, crematorium or whatever, there's that city municipal lot there.
There's one there, that was a little further, I just named one with the.
Okay.
And also because the western side of that, that area is vacant.
Okay.
Ninety percent of the.
So the only thing I was thinking about that one is the city would need to. For safety. As far as um, walking, what do you call crosswalks? Because if people do tend to park there, there's no crosswalk to come across um, Main Street to get to. That area of town. So just comments, things to consider. Because development will also put pressure on if those uh, homes are rentals, it'll put pressure to kind of regentrify those. But again, like just forethought, that Maple Street corridor, um, with any plan that we put in place. There are still residents that live. And anything we do on North may affect South twenty years from now. But whatever we do, need to be sensitive to that. And so. Just a consideration.
Thank you so much for your comments. Any, anyone else from the floor?
I didn't know if it would be appropriate that she raised questions.
Yes.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna say one thing you expect, one thing that's probably not expected from a developer. Um, one, uh, first is just, uh, the planning board in their meeting. Basically expressed the belief that no conditional that involved business or commercial uses would be acceptable. And I failed to ask that question of the council, because she mentioned, as someone who would potentially walk here. She views businesses as a positive, but that was expressed, and again, I do not want to rely on the planning board to express council's wishes. Especially in the terms of a condition, correct? Yes, ma'am. Cause that would guide the conditional application.
I mean, to say that, I think, um. That, that business shouldn't be in a, in a residential neighborhood, I don't agree with that. We actually have a district that's neighborhood residential, so. You know, you have convenience stores that are located specifically in neighborhoods.
Washington.
As, as businesses. Um, uh, King B, all of these have existed for years. Um, but it's, it's finding that balance, right? That uh. That you. I, I don't know if taking the middle of a, of a residential block is the best. Place to put a, a convenience store, and I think actually there's something the ordinance that talks about. That if you're gonna locate a business in a neighborhood residential, that it's a corner lot, I don't know why I'm thinking that.
Well, my thoughts on a conditional is, is for it to be mixed use and match that the city's growth plan. Calls out wanting mixed use, and I was asking the question because. Mixed usually, usually means a mixture of uses, and the planning board comments were residential only, so I was just asking for clarification.
Well, maybe, and maybe there, those, I did watch part of the planning board meeting, but maybe part of that was. Specific to this site, um, that they felt like. When you look at, I don't know, uh, Justin, if you can pull it up, but when you look at that entire block going all the way back to. Going all the way back to Guthrie Street. You know, it's all R seven to the, the block to the left, the block behind it, the block there. And the block to the right, so. And all up at the top, the only thing that isn't, um, is the um. Is there the. Is the um, is, what's the name of the rest on? Peak.
Oh, that's further up now, yeah, I was, uh, earlier in my comments, you know, I mentioned.
It's R seven all the way to peak.
It is there directly across the street, it's a mixture of uses, as mentioned. So as just an example, I walk that block a lot, and within a block I can hit, I can walk to restaurants, churches, Onida Lofts. Tire shop, auto repair, body mechanic. There's, there's a lot of businesses I walk to from that block. Within a block is what I'm saying. I, I'm, I am sensitive to the R seven north of, and. I guess our focus is the idea of, of using that corridor aspect, which also becomes a transitory buffer from the neighborhoods to the north.
I mean, what do you have in mind? You have like mixed-use businesses on the bottom floor?
It, it's very much subject to this body, but yes, I mean, so in general, um, this is where I'm, I probably differ from an average developer in that. I'm here and I care very much about. Creating a walkable fabric and purely residential does not contribute as well. As the ability for people to access services, businesses, et cetera, in those walks. Um, and again, if you look at the fabric of, of around downtown, historically, it has been a mix of uses. So the, the, the best valued for the city, in my opinion, is mixed use, but I need direction on that as well.
When you're looking at doing like ground floor.
Correct.
Um, businesses.
And then.
Upstairs residential.
Correct.
Kind of similar to what downtown is already.
What pretty much all of downtown is, yes, sir.
I think, I think neighbors, um, even with like the Onida Mills. I guarantee you that if there was a plan by a developer to come in and knock down Onida Mills and put up multifamily. You would have had every neighborhood and a neighbor over there fighting against that. But, you know, when we, and, and the comprehensive plan was taken as a result of. Feedback from our community and historic preservation is a very important and very sensitive. And very emotional issue for local residents, people that have been here generations. Um, even in the desired pattern of the comprehensive plan, it says. The pattern of downtown residential neighborhoods. And this is um, speaking directly to the use there. This pattern should be maintained and continued with policies that promote home rehabilitation. And context-sensitive infill development. So, you know. To, to Nikki's point. We welcome new development, but. It needs to be harmonious with. What, um, what we have there, residential. And across the street is this beautifully historically renovated Onida Mill. So I think that there's a product out there that you could put there that would both appease the neighbors and get what you want as well. But I think people just need to be able to see that. Discriminately and, and be able to um. Know exactly what they're gonna get. And I, and, and that tool, I think, helps you because. Having conditional zoning. You know, it, it, it's not like, uh. Once you hear a yes from us about that, it's just all like, just crossing the Ts and dotting the Is, there's not, there's not, you don't, you won't have to come back to us. You know, to get, to get anything else approved. So, um. Is there some reason that you're, that you wouldn't want that?
Um, so one of the, the difficulties unfortunately is oftentimes that tool directly favors the out-of-town developers who can build cookie cutter, repeating product. In large quantity. It works directly against small local developers, sometimes unfortunately from a cost basis, is a one acre parcel. So unfortunately, that is something that at a certain point, the cost sensitivity of small infill. Unfortunately is part of why, I mean, I was reading an article today that says, why does everywhere look like everywhere else? Um, and the answer is unfortunately because of aspects of that. Um, it increasingly makes it impossible for small developers who are probably more emotionally attached to a place. To develop small projects and unfortunately encourages large development that can bear the upfront costs. Which is why you see repeating five over one podium buildings everywhere we go, unfortunately. I am very, very sensitive to the fabric aspect. I know that may not be able to reflect in a, a rezoning request. Um, but it's something that I'm extremely aware of, having rehabbed a number of, of old buildings throughout downtown so far. Um, so that's the unfortunate reality is the conditions absolutely accomplish all of the things that you stated. Uh, the byproduct is they encourage homogenous redevelopment of people who can afford to jump through the hoops. And they do not encourage small, compact, diverse. Development in and around downtowns. It's just an unfortunate reality we've seen through under planning. Uh, I'm sure Justin could vent your ear on that at a, a, a later topic from his education. Also, just one thing, since I have, uh, the council's attention, it's probably again, not typical for a developer. I mentioned earlier and about affordability and housing. Gentrification is going to be a very real word in our community in a very near point, if it is not already in some circles. There are mechanisms to address displacement and address that growth. And I would just basically say, I am happy to work with and encourage the council to consider. Some of those even up to and including, uh, ways to work with developers so that when housing that is naturally affordable. Is removed for higher density, that there be mechanisms so that we can prevent some of that displacement. There are programs in other cities, for example, that allow. Development density bonuses or other things, so that when four houses that are naturally affordable, because they're older and in poor condition. That the developer agrees to meet or exceed that number in future development. And I say that purely because I'm someone who's very aware that a lot of people who have lived here a long time are going to face very real economic pressure in the future.
Thank you for your comments. Do I hear a motion? Uh, I need to, need to close the ma- sorry.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
Yes. All in favor? And. Do I hear a, well, let's discuss, if anybody else have any comments from the. Council, any other discussion? Do I hear a motion then on regarding rezoning of three oh two North Maple Street, two oh three, two oh seven, and two thirteen West Market Street?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to deny the rezoning state, with a statement of consistency. Move to deny the rezoning request to have the property rezoned to central business B one. Because it is not fully consistent with the Graham twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan.
Madam Mayor, second ambition.
Aaron, does he need to be more specific than that? He did not comply with the.
It, it'd probably be easiest, like in the staff report, I list different items, if you just say it's inconsistent with those items.
I don't have it, do you have it, Justin? I didn't, our agenda was two hundred pages. We didn't want to kill a few trees in order to be able to do that. Wouldn't it be from the planning board meeting?
What's that?
These are, you recommended.
Yeah, so you could say it's, uh, inconsistent with policies two point one point one, two point one point three, two point one point four.
Okay.
Two point two point one, two point three point two.
Without further elaboration from the applicant. It's a. Inconsistent with understanding what is diverse job market. Or economic resilience, or the competitive advantage of developing that property to be one.
Do I hear a second?
A second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Jason. I agree with what you're doing there, but like Jennifer said, I didn't get, didn't speak, but if you can come up with a plan. Of what you want to do, I think that would ease everybody's mind. I mean, I really do. I mean, I, I think you're on to something, but. We want to be able to see what you're on to.
And I apologize, but if you will just take one moment, we're going to go back in the agenda. We have a retiring. Uh, employee, Paul Ingrick, if you'll come forward. This is the proclamation, commendation, and appreciation to Paul Ingrick for his service to the city of Graham, whereas Paul Ingrick did diligently serve the city of Graham. From May twenty first, two thousand and one until January thirty first, two thousand and twenty-two. And whereas Paul retired as a property maintenance supervisor on January thirty first, twenty twenty-two, with nearly twenty-one years of service. And whereas his dedication and determination resulted in transfer and advancement from the wastewater treatment plant. To the cemetery supervisor in the public works department, which became the property maintenance supervisor in recent years. And whereas Paul has proven to be a repository of institutional knowledge, wisdom, and care. While gaining the utmost respect from his colleagues and the citizens of Graham. And whereas it is the desire of the city council to extend their deepest appreciation. To Paul for the excellent time and service he has afforded the citizens of Graham and his fellow employees. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Graham, that Paul be commended for his outstanding public service. To the city of Graham, be it further resolved, that an expression of appreciation be extended to Mr. Paul Ingrick. In the form of this proclamation of commendation and appreciation, and that this proclamation become a part of the official records. Of the city of Graham for all of time, and the original thereof be presented to him in person, presented this the eighth day of March, twenty twenty-two. Thank you so much. Yeah, got to sign it. So, I hope you enjoy that. Thank you so much. Thank you for all you did for the city of Graham. Greatly appreciate it. Moving on to our next agenda item. Item number five, conditional rezoning of Gilbert mixed-use revision. And I just want to bring to the council's attention that you may not have gotten the most. The actual revision. So I called Justin today because I said, well, call me crazy, but this doesn't look like a revision, so. He sent me the revision, so can you bring it up for the council to see what the revision is? It might be helpful for them to see Justin. It's side by side, like I pulled it up today. That's the new revision. Previously to the. That's not it.
I'm looking.
Oh dear Lord.
Kickers to try to figure out how to make it look side to side on acrobat.
I thought the uh the original BMP at the top was moved to the bottom, is that correct? Is this, is this what I was looking at, sir? Okay, okay, so I'll pass this down, but the original one had, this was the retention pond up here, and there were no lots over here on this side. No lots over here, and this was a a retention pond. They've moved the retention bond down here to make this much larger at the bottom, and then reconfigured the townhomes and picked up some residential lots here and up here.
Well, we got, I did. The one we had is the detention pond on the little, what's up there now?
And and just because, I don't know, I have a photographic memory or something. I couldn't figure out, I was sitting there counting the lots, trying to figure out what the difference was.
Yeah, we were talking about two different plans, uh, so that made a lot of sense. But I'll I'll go through all the changes when I, when I present it and and we'll, we'll figure it out.
Okay, so um so Justin, it's your, it's your show.
Yes, Miss Mayor, so this is a request to amend the approved conditional zoning from just a few months ago, and that approval is actually up on the screen right now. Uh, this is the plan that was approved, and you can see the the townhomes are centered in the development with a single lane in in between with parking on that lane. Um, and then you had an amenity open space area up here at the northwest corner. There was no connection uh to this northern property here, and then there was a BMP up here to the north. So the request here is to change the the site plan. They've incorporated the conditions from the previous rezoning as well as uh planning board comments into this plan. So you can see they've got a ten-foot asphalt greenway, sixteen-foot public access easement. They also have the chain link fence and the dog park up here to the north, right between the uh single-family lots that are separated here by the gas easement. And then it goes to a cul-de-sac now up to the north that BMP has been combined into the southeast corner of the site. And they have gained some lots here by actually making this recommended connection. They now can uh front these two lots here as well as these lots here along that connection. So they've actually gained uh the ability to add some single family on that connection. And then up here, you've got some more single family that were added uh as a result of the extension of this cul-de-sac. And then in the center of the the development here, you've got uh the townhomes now oriented north and south. Uh, there's a few different driveways, so these ones will, the ones to the east will front on this lane to the east here. Uh, the two in the center will front on the center lane. And then in the west here, you've got a a drive around about this little um probably landscaped area here. Mail kiosk being shown here in this open space area along with the playground area, off-street parking for the mail kiosk. And then uh one of staff's main concerns was addressed here uh with a uh eight-foot street yard buffer and a ten-foot no access, uh ten-foot no access easement for these lots along East Gilbert. Uh, because these lots technically are double frontage lots. We don't want driveways to be located along East Gilbert, which is a major thoroughfare, so uh they have made all those changes for us. Um, staff is supportive of the changes. Uh, it's a very small increase in density. Um, we do not feel that the uh changes to the site are are terribly major. Uh, certainly, they do not detract from the site. Um, and so uh we leave it to the city council.
I I'm assuming that the mover, mover, moving the tension pond was all engineer-approved and all the rest is going to be.
All this has been checked through TRC. They are not finalized, but TRC has had a preliminary review of these plans.
Um, Justin, the the lot, the um street to the left there that now, um just dead ends there.
Yeah.
Um, is that, what is above that? I'm sorry, I don't know.
That is a vacant piece of property owned by the Meadows of Graham. We expect that to develop out in the future, and so our subdivision regulations would require a uh connection in between the two developments uh for future connectivity. So they have stubbed out to that property for the ability for that property to connect through at some.
Does that property owner, they got noticed on this?
They did, yes.
And they know of the changes?
They do, yes.
And um the other question that I had that I had mentioned to you when I spoke with you earlier was the, having all those houses, the rear of the houses being seen on Gilbert Street and the landscaping for that.
Yes, ma'am. So uh that would be an eight-foot street yard buffer that would consist of street trees, uh maybe some small shrubs. There's also a five-foot sidewalk along Gilbert. Um, so that'll provide adequate uh buffering um from these lots now. I would imagine if I was going to buy one of these lots, I would want some sort of sound buffer, so I imagine the individual lot owners will either request that the builder place additional landscaping, perhaps some evergreens fencing back there. Um, the other option would be for them to put that up themselves. But that would be a great question for the developers. But this as presented would meet our ordinance requirements.
And I got another question. On the amenity open space, is it comparable to what you had before? Or looks like, from here, it looks like it may be even more. I can't, can't tell. Do you have?
Yeah, so in this plan, uh, the total open space is three point seven nine acres, and I believe that's the same as what they had previously. It's just more called out and more sensibly spaced throughout the development here. Yeah, yeah, I don't think it's on there. Um.
We can ask.
I would, I'd have to add up all the individual areas, but uh I imagine it's very similar. Um, most of the open space acquired on this site is due to this uh this uh floodplain area. Um, all the other areas were a result of the lot layout and configuration, so.
Okay, we're going to open this for public hearing. Uh, is there anyone from the floor that would like to get up and speak?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
State your name, address.
Amanda Hodiern, eight oh four Green Valley Road, Suite two hundred in Greensboro. Um, I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant. Um, thanks, thanks, members of the council for hearing us again on this request. And if I could approach, I've got some materials that can help us walk through these changes and while we're back. So I think most of you probably remember this, um, just a few months ago, as as Justin uh mentioned, this is a revision of a previously approved conditional rezoning. And as I've stood up here and told you before, when we get a conditional rezoning approved, it is tied to a specific site plan. And that means if we want to change it, we have to do the process again. So you are seeing that in action tonight. Um, that's, that's your conditional protections working for you. So um as we, you know, um as our engineers delved into this after we got the approval last fall um and started engineering and working more on the site, um, they got to tweaking things and found, found a layout that worked better. You know, um, found a few technical aspects that needed to be changed that that we, that uh Justin and and you guys have already caught on to. So that um that really precipitated enough change that we needed to to come back through this process and let you guys see this again. So um, so that's what's happened. If you look at tab one of the booklet, this is our, this is our revised plan. Um, and actually, this has been updated from what Justin had in his, in his presentation there. So um, not, not much, but just a little bit in terms of adding some of the detail. So the significant changes, um, a few that you've already talked about is the relocation of that stormwater pond. Um, of course, you know, obviously, those need to be in low points of the site. And by putting it all combined here at at the most obvious low point, it it was just a little more efficient and and allowed us to um do some other things that one, needed to happen on the site. Significantly, um, just to hit some highlights, the density really hasn't changed much. Um, the previous plan was one hundred and eighteen single-family lots. This one is a hundred and twenty, so just two additional lots. The previous plan was forty-eight townhomes. This one's forty-nine, so one additional townhome for a total of three additional units here. Um, so I would, I would submit that the density is um really the same. Open space has improved. Our previous plan was twelve point three acres of open space. This plan is fifteen point ten acres of open space, all totaled up. Um, so not only is it more open space, but um one of the things we're excited about is it just makes more sense on this plan. It's more intentional, it's more usable. Um, we feel like in terms of how we've um grouped it and managed it, we've able, been able to really kind of create this nice hallmark of the community with the open space feature um that that you see there i- in the front of the townhome section. That's where, if you look at your one in the packet, you'll see that we have a dog park here. We've got um the playground area that's all connected with ADA accessible walkways. We've got the passive open space fields. The mail kiosk is there with the off-site parking. So it really creates kind of a hub for the community and a nice usable um piece of open space there.
Amanda, can I stop for a second? You said one additional townhome. I show three additional townhomes.
Uh, did that change? Okay, I apologize. Thank you for correcting that. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, three additional townhomes. Thank you, Justin. Um, we also reworked the street network. Um, as as mentioned, the townhomes are now vertically oriented, and that allowed us to kind of get that better grid pattern that you see there in the middle. Um, also importantly, we think uh the previous plan had lots platted all the way down into the floodplain. Of course, you know, if you were to buy one of those lots, you wouldn't be able to necessarily build in the floodplain, but still you would own down into it, whereas um, you know, more modern uh subdivision planning doesn't do that a lot, and and this plan embraces that that concept. These lots are not platted into the floodplain. That'll all be preserved and and platted as common element owned and main, owned and maintained by the HOA. So um, I think that's, that's a good improvement here that that we've been able to um to tighten up. Um, also, the the previous plan, you know, in in conceptual form, as these plans are, had a lot of um, conditions added to it by by your body. When, when, when it was approved, you guys wanted to see that any future um plans would provide a stub to the north if we were allowed to cross that gas, that gas line. So this plan shows you that we've, we've taken that into account and taken that extra step now that we're back here refining and and in front of you. Um, so you actually see that those connections shown. You asked for um, you asked for additional details.
Can I stop you before I, I'm sorry, I I'll forget this, but the, can you explain, or maybe your engineer could explain about the pipe, about the gas line?
Um, yeah, I've had, I've got Charlie Oakley here with me from Lennar Homes. He can, he can speak to that, but it is a, you know, it's a pressurized gas line easement that that does serve, serve your area. So they have rules about um what you can do over that, of course. We have been in initial talks with them, and we do feel like we'll be able to cross it as shown here, but ultimately, it is up to them. They do get to approve our plans. So if if we weren't allowed to, and Charlie can speak more to if there's any more context I'm missing, but if we weren't allowed to, we'd just have to pull it back, and we wouldn't be able to get the cul-de-sac with those uh lots to the north there. Um, but like I said, we have approached them. We, we are in talks. It's not uncommon.
So I, so I ask that because are you going to have to come back again?
No, so that, that's a great question, and we, we addressed that at the planning board as well. And I think the um answer was that as long as we
Go down.
stipulated that it was a phase, and that would be phase two, I think that that would allow us, if we did have to lose that, it would just be a matter of never doing phase two as opposed to.
But they can go down, right?
Right, Justin?
No, that's one of the text amendments that we're hoping to pass, but right now, any change in density, whether up or down, would have to come back. But so our solution for that, to prevent them from having to come back if they go down, would be to phase the lots out.
I thought the same thing, and I got corrected at planning board, so the phasing idea was the solution there.
Okay.
Which is a good, a good one. Um, so yeah, I was, I was just saying that a couple of things you guys called out as conditions of your approval last time. We've been able to go ahead and carry those steps forward and show you that here. You all wanted to see more detail on the amenity programming, so we've got that in the plan this time. Um, if you look through your packet there, you can see um at tab three, the last page there is a detail of um of a walking trail pavement detail, which you guys wanted to see, and a playground detail. So you can see that those things are um, you know, specified and included and called out. Um, the other improvement with this plan is just um, you know, as, as Lennar constantly looks at its um, at its lineup of of home choices and options and and tweak and improve those, um, you know, as time's gone on, they've done that, and they have a different, a different um uh line of, line of home types that they're going to be uh building on this site. So the upshot of that is that Graham will get um, you know, a a product line of home choices here that doesn't currently exist here in the region um just by benefit of some time passing and and them doing some updates to their offerings. So um, you've got those new, new elevations there in your packet, which um, you know, they're not terribly different, not, not earth, earth-shattering changes, but just some, some modernizations and upgrades that have been made over time that um this project will get the benefit of. So with that, I'll uh let you guys peruse and ask questions, but um essentially, yeah, this is just a a product of of going through the process and um eventually reaching that tipping point where the changes were significant enough that we needed to come back before you and and let you guys have another look. And we feel like it is a better and improved plan for, for a multitude of reasons that I've highlighted tonight, and we'll hope, hope you'll agree.
Did you lose lots somewhere else? Because the lots that I showed you gained were more than what you said.
We did.
Okay, so there's somewhere on here. I was trying to, it was hard to do like what we were, so I was thinking it, it was not correct, but you lost, you lost lots somewhere else and then gained them up on the
Correct.
left-hand side and the right-hand side at the top, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, at the bottom, we weren't able to keep a lot, lot to lot um sameness. So we, in in all the adjustments, we lost some along the way, but um the the net, the net shakeout was two additional single-family lots. And hopefully you can correct me on that if I'm wrong, just like, yeah, so that one I did have right, two additional tech, two additional single-family lots.
So two additional single-family and um
Three additional townhomes.
Three townhomes. Can I see that original um plan?
The one thing that they really increased or or did a good job of is uh properties along the riverbank. They've taken the property out of the floodplain, which reduces the cost of the customer or consumer buying the property because you don't have to have it extended.
I also think the road network is more sensibly laid out. See how it connects through better than what the original plan was. Like the grassy area, and then another loop outside of it.
You have a lot more lots right on, on uh East Gilbert though, right? And what you have shown there, is that correct?
There are more. Just because of the way we were able to basically create that spine road in a wider circumference to to create that better network that Justin's talking about. Yeah.
From an emergency services standpoint, this is the best layout. Right?
Madam Mayor, just to answer.
Name and address.
Oh, Charlie Oakley, eleven hundred Permer Park Drive, Suite one twelve, Morrisville, North Carolina, two seven five six oh. Um, Lady Todd was manager with Lennar. Good to see you all again. Um, to answer your question about, or the question about the East Gilbert frontage, we have in our development budget that we will build a fence as part of the landscaping buffer there because there is a street. So we, we, that's something we're prepared to do anyway. And then for the gas line, we've started conversations with Duke. It's Duke's gas line. Um, we're scheduling uh SUE basis subsurface exploration where we drill and find out the depth of the line, but Duke wants to be there. So there's some organization of that, so we haven't gotten to that, them in the field yet, but we're working on that. And our engineer feels confident that we'll be able to.
And the change of the townhomes there, what was the thought behind changing the way that from the old configuration to the new configuration?
So we had some concerns about the previous layout, just efficiency-wise and lots slotted into the floodplain, just, just things we didn't quite understand why they were done that way. We had to work with a different engineers for the corporate policy, and we asked Timmons to, you know, fix the things we were worried about, or let more assure us that they weren't broken. And when they took a light, a look at that layout, the old layout, this is what came out to fix it, some of the concerns we had. So it wasn't, and it was just sort of an overall, we have some concerns, and this was the result to fix the concerns that we had.
Once you start changing one thing, it's a domino.
Okay, so I'm very happy to hear that you're gonna have a fence there for the, you know, the, the homes that you have here are three, four, and five bedrooms, assuming children will be in those, and Gilbert being what it is, and just like, I just think that's a really smart, as a, as a parent maybe, but the, I love the fact that the playground is more centrally located, larger, and but the townhomes that are there backing right up to their backyard as a playground. Is there any buffer between those townhomes and the playground? Or is that just?
Are, are you fencing in the pad, the pads for the townhomes?
We That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that question. We, in, in most of our developments, the active open spaces are adjacent to townhomes because you get that informal security by all those eyes. So we try not to completely separate them. That's intentional. There's, there's some intention in those locations.
Also, to your point, from a parent perspective, you know, if you wanna send your kid outside to go play, and you can still keep eyes on him while they're having their pickup game of flag football in the field, you know, probably not every townhome owner would want that. So there's, there's plenty of townhome choices that you could select a unit that doesn't have that, but a lot of people, I think, would enjoy kind of that spillover into that common area. So that is a feature that we do hear about being, being well-received, so.
And if, if there was a buyer who wanted to be backed up to the open space and not have direct access to one of the fence, we could, that would absolutely be part of the package.
And the townhomes that back up to each other, now where, can you show the previous version? You know, they were all single, and they didn't really back up to anything, and now in the new version, they back up to each other. I'm just, you know, looking at it aerial versus like, what is that really gonna look like? Is someone's backyard gonna go right into the backyard of the, the other townhome? Is that gonna be like a?
No.
Okay.
I believe it's thirty-five to forty feet between the buildings. And so the property owners will own the porch and then a little bit of land, and the rest will be HOA. So the HOA maintained between the actual parcels that are owned.
Right, the little footprints that you see here is actually pretty close to what you would purchase. When you purchase a townhome, you, you kind of purchase straight down below the, the building walls and, and not, not the yard as you do in a single-family setup.
Right.
So he's exactly right. The strips of grass that you see are a common area. Those lawns are common area as opposed to individual backyards, which means that you know, you don't have the option of going and putting a patio or a fire pit back there that would be exceedingly close to your neighbor. All that is, is HOA maintained, and if someone were to try to do that, that wouldn't be, wouldn't be allowed to stay.
It'll be an informal open space, basically.
And my only question for clarification, if they're building a fence along Gilbert, staff would wanna see that fence behind the sidewalk and the landscaping. So landscaping and sidewalk are on the Gilbert side of the fence.
Right.
Right.
And that the friendly side of the fence faced out towards Gilbert.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, that whole section there near the townhomes, that has a lot more green now than it had before. It had a lot of asphalt before.
And the subdivision has a great entrance now. You got open spaces on both sides that lead to a big open space there on the northern entrance.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of hard to see in this black and white context, but it's labeled. But exactly, yeah, those, both of those areas beside the entrances are reserved as open space so that we have a lot of opportunity there for a sense of arrival and place making. And, you know, you don't just immediately turn into someone's home lot.
And have y'all done a traffic study yet to see?
Yes, we have. That's, that's another thing with the benefit of time. That's one more step further down the process. We are, this time we do have our traffic, our traffic study complete. It's been reviewed by NCDOT, and those, I believe those comments have been folded in. Is that right, Justin?
I believe so. The improvements are just
Yeah.
There's no major improvements associated with the subdivision.
Um, and you're not required to get a turn-in lane or anything like that?
There, there are turn lanes.
Okay.
Right. Previously, we speculated that that might be the case when the traffic study came down, and now we do have that. We, we do have that known.
Is that at both entrances?
Yes, ma'am.
It is.
Okay. Is there any landscaping around the the SEM?
There will be.
Is that on this? I, I'm sorry, but it's too, I didn't, I didn't get this until today, and.
The only landscaping shown on that plan are the required street trees. That's the only landscape that's shown there. It's a parking lot, island, just the required code landscape plan. Uh, it doesn't have the enhanced landscape that we would submit as part of CDs.
Okay, so up there where it says zoning conditions, can you read those for me, Justin? Cause I can't read them off this printed version.
Can, can Justin read the, the plan in your packet? Cause you have the most updated, and those conditions, I believe, are the most current.
Justin has good eyesight, so he can, if you, if you like. Alright, so zoning conditions, the proposed development should comply with the optimal buffer planting requirements for the proposed zoning. Sod should be placed in all other open space areas as shown. Proposed sidewalk along East Gilbert Street should be placed behind the existing roadway ditch or behind the existing curving gutter. Construction of Street F is dependent on approval from owner of the existing gas easements. Dog parks should be provided on-site. Paved access should be provided to the dog park. Landscaping in the buffer should be appropriate to the buffer and shall be in accordance with city standards. Street trees from the recommended planting list should be provided as well as lot trees for each lot. Playground equipment shall be provided. Playground equipment and access there too shall both be ADA accessible. A walking trail should be provided adjacent to the river with a dedicated public access easement, and it shall connect to the internal sidewalk network. A street stubout should be provided to the lot to the north of the site if feasible. The developers should provide the city of Graham with an express easement to run the entire length where the sanitary sewer line currently exists. The no-access easement for lots fronting along East Gilbert Street should be recorded prior to approval of the final plan.
I mentioned the walking trail detail in, in tab three, but I'll also point out on this site plan that you can see where and how that connection is made. So you can see exactly how it ties into the street network and then comes into that easement that's committed to in the conditions, which was a feature that we discussed conceptually before, but had not, you know, mapped out how it would occur. So that's another improvement that you can see that's evolved.
Um, the material that you're going to be using, I think that came up at one of the prior meetings for the walking trail. Did Ju- Justin did?
It's listed.
Input in that?
We did ask Greg. I don't know if you had a preference. Are you okay with asphalt for the greenway?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
And the other question I had was about the playgrounds. Will that revert to the city of Graham, or will that revert to the HOA?
That'll be HOA owned and maintained.
Okay. And.
Could it be appropriate to ask Chief Cole his opinion on access to fire, fire trucks? He was here.
Sure.
Have you, would you take a look at this plan and just give your opinion on access to fire trucks and things? Do you think it looks good to you, or?
It, it has been reviewed through TRC.
Okay, alright, thank you.
These will be public streets, correct?
Except probably the townhome portion. I'm guessing those are gonna be private.
Yeah, I believe we talked about, I think there's a general note on here that says the uh, townhome parking lots will be common access drives in a public access even or something like that.
Yeah, it says, uh, the townhome parking area is a parking lot with common access easement over the drive aisle. Spelled wrong, not a public or private street.
And will, so how will trash pick up? You have a dumpster?
Yes, ma'am. The dumpster is shown on the north side of the westernmost townhome.
That it?
That'll be just for the townhomes?
Yes, sir.
Everybody else will have regular
Yes, sir.
cans.
I believe it'll be private due to Graham policies, so it'll be private trash collection for the townhomes.
That's my understanding.
Do we need to put in the zoning conditions about the asphalt materials, Justin, or?
It's on the site plan, so it'll, it'll be, it's site plan specific, so that in itself is a condition of this development. Anything shown on the site plan is a condition.
Oh, I didn't think that it was written on here. I could, I can't read it, so.
It, the asphalt trail is labeled, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
It's hard to see, but it's all the way on the right here. Ten-foot asphalt greenway trail and sixteen-foot public access.
I can continue to look at it, but I'm not going to be able to read it. So I apologize, but the, what about the adding of the fence?
I would definitely condition that.
Okay. Any, any other comments from the floor or from staff in regards to conditions of this conditional rezoning?
No, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. You'll state your name and your address for the record.
Jeanette Bowdre, three oh eight East Harden Street in Graham. I was raised across this creek. We moved there in nineteen sixty-one, so I see the floodplain. I heard the comment about the no-flood insurance. I have seen this creek flood a half a dozen times in this time, so that it looks like the Cape Fear River at the ocean, not this one. It will flood, so I'm just going to warn you. It might look like a docile little creek right now, but we have seen it look like a major river several times, so I'm just gonna, I may be throwing a clink in the works and should have been here for planning and zoning. Also, another point I would like to make out is, I know the sewer plant is scheduled for upgrades and work.
Yes.
That's good, because in the summertime, you cannot go out of your house. It smells so bad. I'm, I'm telling you, I've been there since nineteen sixty-one. It's horrible. So I hope those upgrades are done before people move into these homes or they're really mad.
Our upgrade is gonna cost quite a bit of money.
Well, it needs to. It's stunk since nineteen sixty.
Around fifty million, yeah.
Well.
So it comes with a guarantee, a no-stink guarantee.
No work to it. It's been terrible.
For fifty million dollars, it better not stink.
Well, it stinks now, so if you don't get it done before these houses are built, you'll have some mad people.
Well, we're working on it.
So.
We've already got the loans in place.
The comment about the floodplain, that is not gonna control that creek if we have a hard rain, and this was before climate change and global warming and all the other stuff that we're living with now. So I would just like to point that out.
Yeah, so to go along with that, staff would also recommend that the developer advise residents living along the creek that the National Flood Insurance Program would probably, probably be something to look into.
It won't be just along the creek. It will be half of this development. I see it literally look like a huge river, huge, always wrong, so.
Mayor, can we have the engineer come back up?
Can the engineer come back up, please? I'm sorry. I try not to cuss, but.
To hopefully dispel any, any misstep on my part. All of these properties have been surveyed out of the floodplain.
Yes, sir. But that would, so let me they haven't been surveyed, like this plan, these lot lines for these individual homes have not been surveyed, but when we record the plat, those pins will be set, so that all the lots are located outside of the floodplain, correct?
Thank you.
And I can't remember, is it you have crawl spaces, or do you have?
It'll likely be slab.
Slab on that side, on the.
I'm, I'm not looking at our, our preliminary grading plan. We do have some slabs or, or stem walls because of grades. And it may be actually those along the river or on the creek, and I believe on the south side, we may have some slab or some crawl space or, or stem wall. But mostly it will be slab. It likely won't be a hundred percent slab because of some grades here, but.
Well, it's in your own best interest to make sure that you pick correctly. So I, I will leave that to your judgment based on the topography and not pick out which lots need to be crawl spaced, of course, but that's what you get paid the big bucks for, right? So, okay, well. Want to make a motion to, is there anybody else that would like to speak? Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
All in favor? I'll direct the council to page eighty of the agenda. Call for a motion. It's very difficult to go through a two-hundred item agenda.
I don't have page, I don't have page numbers on my agenda on the, this iPad, so it makes it even harder.
I've moved to recommend, I recommend the approval with the conditions of the application, a dog park to be provided, landscaping. I'm sorry, I cannot read this. Landscaping, can you read it, Justin?
I can. I would just enumerate the conditions previously approved by the, the city council as well as the additional conditions that paved access should be provided to the dog park, playground equipment access there too should be ADA accessible. That no-access easement for lots fronting along Gilbert should be recorded, a no-access easement for fronts, for lots fronting along Gilbert shall be recorded prior to approval of the final plat.
And the fence shall be on the interior of the landscaping.
And sidewalk.
And sidewalk.
And face friendly side out towards Gilbert.
And face friendly side.
Towards Gilbert.
Towards Gilbert.
I second your motion, mayor.
All in favor? All opposed? Thank you very much. It was a very well-thought-out plan, and we greatly appreciate you coming to Graham and developed this project. Thank you so much.
Do you have a timeframe when you're gonna start shoveling dirt?
We're, we're shooting for August to have break, start moving dirt, so. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Number six was withdrawn. Number seven was withdrawn. Number eight was withdrawn. Number nine, um, the development ordinance for recreation and amenities. Want to recognize Justin Snyder, the planning director.
Hello again. Uh, so Madam Mayor, staff is proposing the language in your packets to create standards for recreation amenities that would be required concurrently with construction of any proposed subdivision that would contain five or more units. The amenities required would be based on a point system that would be tied to how desirable the amenities are, and the number of required points would be tied to the number of dwelling units and/or the size of the development. And planning board has vetted this text, and the, the city attorneys have also vetted this text, so I will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
How do we come up with number of units in paragraph ten point two-five-one, bow legged B? Five units?
So that's a great question. So that was determined by the definition in our ordinance between a major subdivision and a minor subdivision. So minor subdivision solicits any subdivision of four or fewer units, whereas a major subdivision would be five or greater units, so that, that's where we came up with that number. It was to try to keep it relatively simplistic. Uh, staff does recognize that the council may want to increase that number to maybe like twenty as, as a starting point for where recreation amenities might be.
What's considered a unit? One house?
A house or a dwelling unit in a multifamily development.
I think even twenty's too small.
Yeah, I do too.
It should be around.
I think what we were thinking was more of like, you know, two hundred or, but, but I mean.
Size of the, the Gilbert.
And, and the, and the, and I asked specifically about Gilbert because it was on for tonight. And based on the ordinance as it's writ, as the text amendment is written, Justin said they would have had to, to kind of give you a scale, you know. They would have had to add an additional one acre approximately. And it's about ten to twelve percent of the total development would be devoted to recreation.
That's correct.
I, I think that's just a little bit too much. I was happy with what Gilbert put together, so I think we're really close. But, you know, I think it's, I think the challenge for staff, and, and I would not want your job, is you know, to, to write something that in a text that is gonna be fit all situations, right?
That's correct.
So like, you've got the huge subdivision that's going in right across from the regional park. They don't need a park. They don't need to do a pocket park, in my opinion. They have a huge park right across the street from them. But the goal here was so that it's not an undue burden on our rec director and our recreation staff and the other citizens of Graham tax base when huge developments come in that have seven hundred homes and no amenities inside that development, which we have seen in the last two years.
That's correct.
As I've, you know, been very opposed to, because I feel like if you're gonna get something, you need to give something.
As a good steward to the community, yes.
Exactly, and then there's like this concern that, you know, well, there's, you know, there's all these things that are needed, right? Trash pickup, schools, um, the traffic, all of these things, and.
You'll find the cost to the city is actually in excess of what we get in return for these subdivisions.
Right.
Quite significantly.
And in addition to the parks, the drain, you know, the, the need for us to have to put in parks. So if we can encourage that recreation within that development and get the developers to designate land, not swamp land, not floodplain.
Correct.
But actual buildable land to those amenities. I mean, I would, I think we would get a much better development and, and I think that moving forward, that's like responsible building.
And, and there's even opportunity within this ordinance for development within the floodplain. Certain things can go in the floodplain, trails can go in the floodplain, so there's that opportunity for them, even in those unusable areas to create usability. And, and so, you know, and, and they don't just have to do parks. They could do a gazebo. They could do a pickleball court if they have an older community, or, you know, they can tailor these amenities to whatever the needs are of their community, or whatever their demographics are that they're trying to reach. And, and that was kind of the goal, is so that this could be as far reaching as possible, uh, in, in as many situations as possible. Understanding your comments, of course, that maybe we want to direct these towards larger developments, which is certainly fine. Uh, that would be as, as simple as just changing the word five to whatever minimum you want it to be. Um, and then to your point about maybe we're a little bit high on the amount set aside. You know, it's, it's gonna be the same percentage for everybody. It's not, it, it's based on the one thirty-fifth of an acre for each dwelling unit or lot, so no matter how many lots, it's gonna be the same percentage. But that's gonna seem like a lot more to somebody who's doing a small development as it is to somebody who's doing a huge development, so uh, in consideration of that, we could maybe look at one fiftieth of an acre, or one fortieth of an acre, or something like that, to try to maybe reduce that burden slightly for them. But I think the point scale itself is probably accurate based on what the uses are, so I, I think if we tweak those couple of things, I think we probably have a good product here.
So in, in, I was reading about the trash receptacles, like, but in the actual practice, like, who's responsible for having those trash receptacles that you say have to be at these recreational areas, which are absolutely needed, but like, is that the HOA or?
If it is a, uh, if it's an item that's dedicated to the homeowners association, then they absolutely would be responsible for it. Now, if it's a, if they're dedicating a park to the town, then of course we would take up the trash.
I have an issue with that.
I have an issue with it also.
I, I do too. You know, parks and wrecks that are on, in a subdivision that has an HOA, that's their property. They should own it, and they should maintain it. They should not be dedicating their part and then give it to the city to maintain, which means we've just added something to the tax burden of the citizens of Graham. Yeah, that first paragraph in section H, method of provisions of dedication.
But what do you do with like Oak Grove Park that doesn't have an HOA, and they have close to four hundred homes, and we have a little pocket park there at Oak Grove that Rec maintains and, and takes care of?
We address that through future plans and development that they have. They'll have parks. But we shouldn't give them the opportunity to pass that tax or the maintenance burden onto the citizens' grant.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of, a lot of things that come up. Um, I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I'm, I'm just saying, like, I, you know, that's why planning is so important, right? What we're up, all up here doing is very important. Because the Oak Grove Park is primarily used, I would assume, by that neighborhood, by the people in Oak Grove in that subdivision. But anybody, because it's a public park, can go down there and use it, which may or may not, you know, get the neighbors rattled or whatever, but, um, so it's, it's a, you know, it's a give and take kind of thing.
All because Oak Grove has, you know, has a public park in it right now, doesn't mean that in the future we're gonna do the same thing. That's why we're writing, writing this ordinance, says in the future, we encourage the developer to incorporate parks and wrecks, you know, whatever, in their development, but it belongs to them. It belongs to their HOA.
Justin, isn't it required by state law that a HOA be committed or created for each new subdivision?
Yes.
So anything coming down the pike after we pass this is on the developer and the HOA.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm just being devil's advocate here, okay? Maybe it's my age or something, I don't know, but
if.
Things don't always go as planned, and, and, and case in point, let's talk about Old Fields. You know, went bankrupt, so uh, those amenities didn't get built, but had they been built, you know, or even halfway built or in the middle of being built, and, and that went back to the bank. Going forward with Old Fields, like, they do have a homeowners association, and so if those amenities get built as that hood continues to, I think they have a new developer out there, right?
Yeah, so each lot owner buys into that homeowners association with their dues, and then, you know, that builds the pot so they can take care of more and more of the amenities, so they can expand them in the future and, and maintain them as they need to.
How many HOAs go defunct?
HOAs? Not many. Uh, I mean, they, they, they tend to expire. They don't necessarily go defunct. So usually ten to twenty years they'll age out.
I guess.
And then who maintains it at that point?
Usually just the residents that live there will maintain it, honestly. I live in a neighborhood where that's happened.
Okay, love to hear from you, Brian, Rec Director of Graham.
So I'm, I'm in agreement with, we don't want a lot of small little pocket parks in neighborhoods all over town. I have been able to give some input, and this is a great example of the project you guys just approved, about what some of those amenities should look like, so I appreciate that, and I appreciate the fact that we're not gonna be burdened with maintaining some of those things in the future. I would like to bring up, or reintroduce to some, introduce to others, the, a fee system for larger developments coming in, and I think Mr. Chin, you mentioned the burden on just trash pickup and recreation and all sorts of other things. When some of these larger developments are put in, you can get some money upfront to not tax our taxpayers as much with, for bringing in X number more people into our community who are now gonna be at our parks, or, you know, a strain on the public works department. We can get some of this money upfront to help defer some of those costs. If an HOA goes out, I am not gonna be one that just wants to see a playground, just sit there and go defunct. I would do our best to try to take in that amenity and maintain it further, because it's, it's not fair for those children who live there, or for anyone else, whatever is built. I mean, Justin had a great example of a pickleball court being in a particular type of neighborhood. Those things should be maintained whether an HOA does it or not. Obviously, A1A is HOA maintains that. But if it's not, then personally, I would not want to see something just sit there and be overgrown and, and go to waste.
Again, it's a situation of responsibility and ownership. If a HOA goes defunct, where does it say that we, the city of Graham, taxpayers of Graham, have the responsibility to take over and maintain that, that playground for them?
Doesn't say, to me, it doesn't say that that's a responsibility. I'm telling you personally, I would like to see my department, as it exists now, try to fold that into what we do, so there is a viable recreation amenity in a neighborhood.
Well, I just, again, if you extend your staff to do that, you're using taxpayer dollars through the, your staff to maintain what is a privately owned park.
At that point, it would not be privately owned. It would be open to anyone in the public, and for me, that is the right thing to do.
If it belongs to an HOA.
But it.
It's their property.
In our example, it would no longer belong to that HOA. If, if the HOA goes defunct, again, I would not want to see that just sit there and go back into the dust.
Well, I'm sorry, I just, you know.
But getting, oh, so you got two hundred people living in the subdivision, getting all two hundred people to sign off on that to D D, back to you, is slim and none chance.
I agree, and again, we are not, I don't think we're that far off. I agree that the HOA is the answer, but if the one percent chance occurs, again, I personally would want to do the right thing and maintain that amenity for those folks who are living there. That's just me personally.
That's, but if I'm a taxpayer who has no affiliation or association, I'd ask, why am I paying to maintain property owned by a subdivision? Which, if it went to fuck, then everybody in that HOA got a piece of that land. It's theirs.
So we have a solution to this. It's called bonds, performance bonds. And when developers promise homeowners that they're gonna put in an amenity, we, and they don't do it, and something happens, you call on the bond.
That's correct.
And you pay someone else, another developer, to come in and put that in, and make sure that that happens, but I think, you know, hopefully, we won't have a lot of those happen. But I know, Oak Grove just came to mind, but how many, like, kind of community parks? I, I remember reading it through the master plan, but I can't remember. It seemed like it was six or seven.
We have Greenway Park, we have Marshall Street Park, Oakley Street Park. That's Marshall Street Park.
Bill Cook.
Harmon Park is probably the last one. It was, um, built a handful of years ago, back in, near the highway. And I think that was a Habitat for Humanity build, and a lot was given to the city. So four little small pocket parks. Now, I heard Bill Cook Park mentioned, that is obviously a regional part-sized park for all to come. So not exactly apples to apples in this situation.
Right, well, in our, um, in our strategic plan, we're trying to locate all, you know, residential, we want residential development to be located within, I believe the comprehensive plan says, within a mile of the existing, of, of an existing park. So if you do that, and, let's see. They talk about putting, encouraging neighborhood pocket parks. This is in the, in the, um, so did you start by saying you don't, you don't want that?
Oh, no, I, I, I want parks wherever we can put them.
Oh, okay.
If they're maintained by others.
Yeah, okay.
That's best case scenario.
I was like, okay, because in our comprehensive plan, we want to encourage neighborhood pocket parks
Right.
uh, of one-fourth acre, and try to make sure that parks are in central neighborhoods and make sure that they're within, parks are located at least within a mile of any development that we have going forward, so.
So my solution for Mr. Chin and Mr. Hall would be to eliminate, i- if, if the council sees fit, just eliminate the first paragraph under subset H, and I think that would solve the problem.
Okay. What about B, and it says five or more residential units?
And that's where we would just simply need to arrive at a number.
Okay, and then you said get rid of H?
H, H first paragraph.
Dedication.
Thanks, but no thanks, right?
Second paragraph's not a problem, but the first paragraph.
Yes, sir.
Dedicate the park at some point in time to the to the city. Anything that's dedicated to the city has been dedicated to the taxpayers of Grant. We pay for it.
Um, can you talk a little bit about the payment in lieu?
Sure. So the, the payment in lieu is a, um, it's a tool available to developers that was initiated by the state law changes in one sixty D. It's been around a long time before that, but now it's been expanded, so any form of performance guarantee that the developer wants to use can be submitted in lieu of making certain improvements, provided that there's adequate fire protection, water and sewer available to the, or, was it water, fire protection, and access, I think, are the three things that are required to be in place. Once those things are in place and the city has accepted it, we, we do a bond or surety review of an engineer's estimate. of an engineer's estimate submitted by the developer of the remaining items, including any recreation or amenities that would be required. They submit that performance guarantee for 125%. That's the maximum that we can charge under state law. And that helps protect against inflation and other things, not for very long, but you know, at least for the time being. In the unlikely or unfortunate event that the developer might default on their obligations, then the city can call those items and hire somebody to come in and finish that project. It, it was a huge response to the 2009 housing market crash.
At the end of, on the third paragraph of I, the last sentence says, the city council has authority to sell land dedicated pursuant to these provisions.
I'm sorry, which?
So I, the third paragraph.
I have one paragraph for I. What's, what's the heading titled?
Payment in lieu of dedication. Yeah, we all have five paragraphs.
All right. The version I have says, it, it's, the, the planning board wanted that changed to the performance guarantee. So the version that I have only has two paragraphs, and I'm not sure how you keep getting out of date information. Let me pull it up for you.
Brian, I'm sorry, I have one more question for you. Did you, did you look through this whole chart? Multi-purpose field, sports field, community garden?
It's been some times. I'd need to review it again.
Could you, could you just look at it real quick? And I mean, it has splash park, swimming pool. And just make sure there's nothing on there that's of concern to you?
Concern as in something we would not want in our city?
Well, not encourage in a, necessarily in a subdivision.
Okay, okay.
That maybe you have experience in, in being a rec director. You may not want to try to handle that as an HOA kind of thing.
Or you may not want to have to pick up and handle as a public park if that defaults.
It's a point system.
I've seen all of these amenities in neighborhoods. There are some high maintenance costs after the life. We'll just take a tennis court for an example. That's going to be a high ticket item to replace. So if that HOA wants to take on that responsibility and that's what those folks want to have in their neighborhood, more power to them.
Yep.
They want to have a pool with a water slide, more power to them. That's
But I guess when, I guess where I'm going with this is that it's a point system, right?
Correct.
And so if we want to encourage one thing over another, you give more points to the thing you want to encourage and less points to the thing that you don't want to encourage. You still give people the option to be able to do it, but you don't get as many points for it because you see it as a maintenance nightmare and you might end up with it.
Yeah, which is why on here, the, the lowest, the easiest points, I guess, to get is multi-purpose field. That's open space, throw down some grass seed and call it a day. Yep. So that's, and same thing, that's multi-purpose field. Then they call it a sports field, community garden, dog park. And those are things that are high on our list as well to put in, again, because they're relatively low cost, relatively low maintenance, high return. You guys were talking earlier about some stuff in the floodplain and Justin mentioned we want to get as many connections within the floodplain along creeks and rivers that makes sense as we possibly can to expand the greenway throughout Alamance County, not just Graham, but I mean, we're, we've been working on that for 25 years now and there'll be another 75 before we, you know, get something that can connect from one side of the county to the next, along the river and along the creeks. But if we don't get them now, we'll never have them. So those pieces are valuable to us, not just it's floodplain and we'll see them. If they get credit for giving the city some land that's or at least an easement within a floodplain that we then turn into a connecting greenway down the road, then that's very beneficial. If it's in an HOA and we can't get public access to it, we're not interested. So, Mr. Chen, we're on the same page.
Yep.
More than.
And Mayor Tala, just to go back, somehow the text amendment I had got overwritten with an older version. So we replaced per the planning board's recommendation, instead of the payment in lieu, we now replace that section with performance guarantee. So it says as an alternative to completing construction, all require improvements. Basically, we pulled it right from the code in the other section of the development ordinance.
Well, in, in light of that, a big stickler on public notice and I think we can come to a resolution, but I'd like to see a cleaned up version of what you're presenting to the council and then that be advertised in the agenda. I don't feel comfortable voting on it tonight with the changes.
Yeah, so, so these, the changes went to the planning board. They just somehow did not make it into your package.
Right, but they also didn't, they did not make it, more importantly, to me, someone who is reading this from the public may think they don't need, not that they necessarily care about a text amendment, but
May I ask?
Still need to advertise it.
What, what do you have for subset I in yours?
Payment in lieu of dedication.
Okay, so yeah, see, that should be timeframe for completion. So I'll, I'll get you the cleaned up version. If you want to continue it.
Yeah, I, I think we should and then and I'm sorry, but
It's okay. I'll have the correct version.
These are, these text amendments are, we need to make sure we get them right.
Absolutely. So that's fine. And I apologize that somehow did not get in your packet correctly.
Can you explain to me though, just so that I'll know, so I won't have to ask this question next month, what, what the planning board, why they wanted that changed?
So they wanted it tied to, first of all, they wanted a timeframe for completion to be at 30% of the completion of lots. So we didn't have that sitting out there until, you know, 80% of the lots were in and there's still no amenities. So they tied it to 30% of the proposed lots in the development being constructed. And then instead of the payment in lieu, we already have the performance guarantee in the development ordinance. So it seemed logical to go ahead and just incorporate that into this code to keep it uniform throughout.
Okay.
So I think there were good changes.
Okay. Was there, I watched the planning board meeting, but I'm trying to remember if they had anything.
Those were the only two changes.
Okay. Okay. So can I get a motion from the council? Oh, yes.
Madam Mayor, we wanted to tie the money to the project.
Correct.
Going back to Water Course, if some of you may remember, when Water Course come along, they had some amenities that they promised. And ultimately, the city settled for payment in lieu after the fact. And we wanted to tie the, the monies to the particular property. So we wouldn't take that money and move it from that development and take it somewhere else in the city and spend it. So that's why we chose the wording and the language that we did. Water Course originally promised a walking trail, a bridge and some other things down there. And ultimately, the council at some point took a payment in lieu. And who knows where that monies is today as far as where it is in the city, but the amenities were never built there.
I totally get that.
That's why we
So it was a very sensible change that we were in agreement on, so.
Well, that, maybe there's, when we take payment in lieu, that needs to be upfront before a developer should not be allowed to be selling units on, in their subdivision and promising amenities. And then at the ninth hour, turn around and pay the city off not to put in the amenities that they promised the residents that bought the homes.
That's correct. You would never take a payment in lieu at the end of a project. So again, that's
So why did they?
So much more sense to do the bond or the surety or letter of credit because that's a front end sort of thing. So I think that accomplishes whatever.
Have we corrected that so that that doesn't happen?
You will see that, yes.
Okay, good.
So my apologies.
Okay. So do I hear a motion from the council?
Madam Chair, Chairman, Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we table this until next, till our April meeting.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Move on to item agenda 10, development ordinance for exterior lighting. Justin, if you can address this issue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this was also continued to send it back to the planning board and get their input as well as attorney's input. Both of those things have happened. We are proposing language to create standards for exterior lighting that apply throughout the city that would apply to non-residential and multifamily developments in the city. This would not apply to single-family residential. And the goal of these is to prevent light trespass, to create uniform standards throughout the city, to make sure that there is minimum lighting standards to, for safety, for parking areas for pedestrians, and also to establish maximum lighting so that we don't over illuminate the night, as you've seen many of the folks along Cherry Lane complain about with Amazon and some of the other companies. So we feel that these standards are, are pretty straightforward. I know it's kind of hard reading, especially with some of the jargon and terminology that's involved. I'm happy to answer any of your questions, however.
So these apply to industrial, commercial developments as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because in, in reading through, it was like, which one?
Yeah, so under applicability, it says lighting plans would be reviewed as part of the review process for all non-residential and multifamily permit applications.
So the non-resident, I thought at first, you know, does non-residential mean?
It's the easiest way to say.
Industrial, okay.
Apartments wouldn't have to.
They would, yes.
Okay.
Bonnie, do you have any comments?
Not on this one, no ma'am.
Joey.
Did I read somewhere where it had to be engineer approved? I'm thinking of something else.
Not engineer approved, but it should be an lighting plan.
Okay. And would that fall into just the overall site plan?
Yes, sir.
Whoever the engineers over the site plan would be responsible for laying out the lighting.
That's correct, yeah. And they will do these plans anyway because they need to light their sites. So they're just adding the sheet to our packet so that we can review it for these standards.
Has, and I know you said the attorneys looked over this, but I guess I would feel a little bit better if our engineer has looked over this. I don't think the
So this doesn't really have
Public knows what, you know, 1.0 foot candles looks like and what lighting color temperature shall not be greater than 4,000 K.
So 4,000 K is what your standard DOT light fixture is. 3,000 K would be the yellower colored light fixture. It's, it's the color temperature. And then the foot candles is the measurement of light intensity. So the higher the foot candles, the brighter it is. 30 is equivalent to basically a car lot. You know, 0.2 at the, at the property line. Basically, it's almost as dark as you can be without, you know, you can still see light, but you can't really get any sort of light trespass. The key here is you don't want light trespass from site to site. You'll still have visible light. You'll be able to see light. But the light itself will not illuminate the property next door. That's what we're trying to prevent.
And you've got some use-specific exemptions in here. Banks and financial institutions.
That's right. So because of their unique operating and safety concerns, we would recommend that we allow a higher intensity similar to the car lot, so up to 30 foot candles. So that would be your banks, financial institutions, your ATMs, motor vehicle sales, motor vehicle fuel stations, correctional facilities, recreational fields for soccer, baseball, football, et cetera, businesses and institutions in Courthouse Square Historic District, which are so close together and are in such need of security because of their location downtown, that it makes sense to have a little bit more lighting downtown for pedestrian safety, so.
Well, I know when Family Dollar came in and built and they had residential on the other side, it was, I mean, it looked like somebody just lit up their entire house.
That's called over illumination.
Drive by and you say somebody's going to be complaining about
That's, that's right. And that's exactly what we're trying to prevent is from people having to call the city and say, why is this new development lighting up my night sky? Why do I have to put blackout curtains at nighttime?
Okay, well, thank you, Justin, for putting this together. If there's, is there any comments from the floor? Anybody in the public that wants to comment on this text amendment? If not, make a motion to close the public meeting.
I make the motion, we close the public meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I hear a motion from the city council in regards to the amendment for electric, exterior lighting in the development ordinance?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve this text amendment. It's consistent with the Graham 2535 plan.
And is that what's on page 129? Of the agenda?
Page 129.
That's the next.
That's the next one.
Item.
That is the
Does see page 129 for consistency statement, please.
Okay, we're ready. Based on the 2535 plan and in the jurisdictional and best practices, city council recommends approval of the text amendments. The following supporting recommendations are to allow the city to control lighting trespass, nuisance glare and illumination of properties that protect surrounding property owners.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, development ordinance, accessory dwelling units. Recognize, Justin Snyder.
I feel like I've got this whole agenda, I'm sorry.
You're such a troublemaker.
So, so this language is to create standards to allow accessory dwelling units in residential districts, specifically single-family residential districts. Currently, Graham doesn't have any standards for accessory dwellings. And thus, we are unable to permit them. When people ask, we do receive several requests from citizens looking to do this for aging parents that they wish to be on the same property or aging parents wishing to have their children on the same property. So we would like to be able to, we'd like to be able to approve these, honestly. we'd like to be able to approve these, honestly, but with standards. And so additionally, this will also help keep a bit more density in the city without being overly obtrusive. And it also frees up other dwelling units for other people to move into, thus contributing to affordable housing. So we did set up some standards. The one change recommended by the planning board was to change the minimum or the maximum size to 1,600 square feet. Previously, it was 800.
How many of these do you have come to you over here?
In the past month, I've had five. They're, they're, they're coming more and more, especially as people are realizing how expensive it is to buy a lot and build on it. Whereas they've got the land, you know, just the cost to build is not quite as hard to swallow as it is to, to buy land at a premium price and then build on it.
It was a, it was a real big request whenever parents started age. Age shall be higher. I guess it was a way people have the building allowance around without actually having any house.
You said 1,600 square feet?
1,600, yes, sir.
So then you would be.
So ADUs would be, could, could, could also be, couldn't they also be attics and basements if they had emergency access?
They could, assuming they have emergency access and they meet building code for ceiling height and, you know, other things, yes, they could be located within attic or basement. The, the key there is it has to have its own exterior access, it has to be lockable, has to have its own trash service, off-street parking, similar to what the other development or what any other unit would have.
Well, my big concern is you move into a neighborhood, it's an approved subdivision. They don't have HOA for whatever reason. It's Steel Crest subdivision or it's Oak Grove Greenway Park or something like that. And these things start popping up in everybody's backyard. You're really getting away from the intended use of you have, you know, a house of this size and the zoning of that, you know, how many square feet you're supposed to have of a building that is the primary use of that property. And if you can build an accessory building on a lot because maybe you were in a cul-de-sac or something and your lot really expands in the back. And you could put a 1,600 square foot building back there for, for someone to rent. And when I, when I looked into this, I went in, you know, with an open mind, but one of the things that Durham did was they made it to where, you know, somebody that's just renting property, they're going to try to put as many ADUs as they can, right, on that property because that's more income for them. And so the, the primary residence is rented and the accessory dwelling is also rented. And so they tried to say, well, we're going to allow you to do it if the, if the property owner is one of the, is their primary residence. And then that was challenged in court and said, you can't do that.
Exactly. That's unconstitutional.
Right, so they couldn't do that. And so there was a lawsuit about that and then they stopped doing that. But there was complaints, obviously, from neighbors that felt like they had, I mean, what's, I, I can see their argument. They're like, why, why, why am I living in an R-18 subdivision? And some of these older neighborhoods are R-18 subdivisions and they have 250,000, 300, $500,000 houses there. And they don't want an accessory dwelling or a multifamily use beside them.
So it wouldn't be a multifamily.
Well, a duplex is.
Multipole families, but not multifamily. It would not be duplex. This is a single family.
It has the effect of a duplex.
I don't know about that, but it, so the biggest thing here.
So it, it can be attached or it can be detached.
It could be either.
So, so let's assume that it's, if it's attached, would it not have the same use as a, as a duplex?
It could, but it, how's it, and how's it any different than somebody adding on to the back of their house and having their kids living there? I mean, all you're doing is putting a lock on the door. That's the only difference. Is it not?
It's an accessory unit. It's not under the same roof.
It would be under, it could be under the same roof. It just would have its own exterior access.
That would be in addition.
In addition. It's in addition to a house if it's added on. Whereas just like if it was a detached one, we don't have a restriction on the size of an accessory building. So if they wanted to build a 1,600 square foot garage, they could do that as long as it meets the setbacks. It, it's an innovative way to, to allow density without creating too much density, if that makes sense. Without having, you know, 100 extra lots in a subdivision instead you've just got a couple of extra houses.
So a subdivision that has 400 homes could potentially have 800.
Well, they could, but again, you got to look at realistic application. They've got to meet the setbacks, just like the primary dwelling would have to. Most primary dwellings are placed in the center of the lot, so it's going to be difficult for them to be able to do that.
Well, let's take a subdivision, like when it's not pre-planned, you can't like, that's, that's what we just said earlier. It's like writing something to fit every situation is really difficult. You know, if you're out in the ATJ and you have a big lot, this isn't a problem probably, right?
Right.
But if you're on Wildwood Lane where you just add where they, the previous city council just added another 700 and some homes and you have cars already parked in the middle of the road and you can't even pass a car on that road. Adding additional density to that neighborhood is detrimental to those neighbors.
So if, if you so chose, you could add a minimum lot size before you were able to have an accessory dwelling in it. You could say they'd have to have at least a half an acre or an acre or 18,000 square feet. That's, that's up to you. I don't think the solution is to deny the request. I think it would be to find a way to say yes to the request.
So I, I don't disagree with you. I think that I get a little bit nervous about just doing a use by right. And I would prefer to maybe look at it site-specific in the sense of a special use permit.
We don't want to do that.
Okay.
You'll have.
Tell me why.
Special use permits and every single change to that site moving forward would have to come back to the council. That's every single change.
Well, and a couple of other cities that I've looked at.
Somebody wants a fence, they got to come back to you guys to get a fence. If somebody wants to remove a tree, they got to come back to you and remove a tree. Special use permit is definitely not the process you would want to use for that. That's designed for uses that have no place in the city and you're trying to find them a place. So your asphalt plants, airports, you know, that, that's what special use permit process is designed.
So in Durham, they were doing, being done by special use permit?
They're crazy.
Well.
We have two staff.
There was four other cities that I looked up that were doing by special use permit.
Two, so we, we do not have the time to, to handle all those special use requests.
Just because Durham doesn't, or does it, doesn't make it right for us.
That's even more of a reason not to do it, probably, if anything.
No, I know. I'm just saying, like, to just allow it by right, I don't know that I.
Well, I like, would Justin recommend it? Put a space, you know, size condition on it.
Yeah, so if you don't want them clustered together, you make it a bigger lot for the minimum lot size. So say lots that have one acre can have a accessory. If you got under an acre, then you can't.
How many accessory dwellings would you allow?
Only one. Only one is allowed per lot.
One accessory, I'm sorry. I just read that wrong.
I'm good with one acre. It keeps subdivisions that already have covenants.
That's right.
People go, when they hear something like this, they're going to go crazy.
Yes.
And they're going to want to come and say, we want this. We've gone through that with our subdivision and it costs us a bunch of money.
And, and we could do that as a starting point. And if we see that we're getting lots and lots of requests, say, hey, you know, I've got a half an acre lot. Can I do it? And we're getting like tens and tens of these requests, you know? We can come back and we can say, okay, we're getting a bunch of requests. What do you think? But as a starting point, you know, an acre might be a good starting point. Bonnie, what's your thoughts?
Well, to me, you, you're basically saying, because you, you go into a lot of neighborhoods, you know, and there's houses 1,600 square feet. You know, the main dwelling.
Yes, ma'am.
So you're basically talking about putting two dwellings on one lot.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't see how that really fits in with the zoning densities necessarily. And there were some other things that, that are in here, like accessory units to be rented or leased on a nightly or weekly basis shall not create significant noise, traffic, or undesirable effects.
So to be, to be honest, that ties in with Airbnbs, which we do not and are not going to be able to control. And so our only method of control for any sort of enforcement action against those is to put that statement in there. Because we cannot control ownership or renting or any of that.
I know, just speaking strictly for me personally, if somebody turned around and built a 1,600 foot structure, if my neighbor did that, you know.
Yes, ma'am.
I would.
So just, just.
It would not be well received.
Initially, I had it written as 800 square feet or half of the heated square footage of the primary dwelling, whichever was smaller. But the planning board thought that 1,600 square foot would be better because we had some citizens speak that said they would probably want larger units than 800 square feet in the future on some of these larger estate trap lots, so.
I just don't want the city to become rental property.
Correct. And, but we can't control that, unfortunately. We, we, we don't have control over that.
But so are you saying that if you, I mean, the, the accessory dwelling unit, the ADU would still have to be smaller than the primary?
That's how I had initially written.
Do we have the right version?
What do you mean? Oh, no, planning board changed it. You have the version planning board put forward. This is planning board's changes.
Because this is 800 square feet.
Oh, well, you have my version then.
That's what I have.
That's what I have.
I like my version better, but they, that's the version they came up with, so.
What else changed?
That was the only change. F, it was F.
So.
Oh, and they removed the separate water and sewer tap connections.
Which would be why I would like to speak.
Which is why Josh wants to speak.
Okay. Hi, Josh.
How are you, Ms. Tommy?
Good. How are you?
Good. I'm Josh Johnson with Al Williams, Carmen and King, 740 Chapel Hill Road, Burlington, North Carolina. I'm your city engineer. Some of you I haven't met yet, but I'm your city engineer. I was, um, I was reading the amendment or the changes and I would say that as your city engineer, I would prefer that the, um, freestanding structures in particular, they need their own water meter.
That was why I had.
That would be consistent with the city's other water and sewer year's ordinance. So that's, that's my statement. Thank you.
So from staff standpoint, the version that you have would be the version that we would like to see adopted.
Yeah, have you all talked to the postal system? Because there's in a lot of subdivisions, there's no addresses.
That's right. So there would have to be halves or units or things like that. And they do not like to do that.
They don't accept them anymore.
So when they do new addressing, now they skip a number in between.
Right.
Just in anticipation of this very circumstance or in anticipation of subdivision. You know, it may get things out of order. I don't know. But unfortunately, we can't control what's happened in the past, but we can only control what's going forward.
And when you say there's sufficient off-street parking on the parcel to accommodate two spaces for the principal dwelling and one space per bedroom in the accessory unit, which may include garage spaces.
Yeah, so if you've got a two-bedroom house as your primary dwelling and a two-bedroom house as your accessory, you're going to have, let's say you got a two-car garage, so you could count that as two spaces. And then if your driveway is sufficiently long and wide to park two cars next to each other, too deep, you'd have six spaces, basically. So just to make sure that there's sufficient off-street parking available for them.
So, okay, so when you consider, what if I say, oh, well, I'll just park the car in the yard? Is that considered?
Do we have anything in the code of ordinances about parking cars on the yard? I don't think we do. I think they could park it wherever they want.
I would suggest at one time the attraction.
Tommy, do you have any concerns with this? About being fences that are locked down that you're trying to get to these?
I'm sorry.
About with fences where they lock you out to keep you from getting to, into the yards to actually get to the structure? How is that going to play into it?
We, we currently deal with fences now that are earning our business, but they also keep dogs out from us. We'll be arriving sites, but fences or fences, there's not a really. We have a pretty common problem, especially where there are one meter, we have one apartment affected, we have to shut the complex down.
I guess, can I ask Dean Ward? Am I, am I missing something when it comes to, why would you, why would you want a larger, why would you want to go from 800 square feet to 1,600 square feet? For the ADU?
It was strictly what we was thinking about is if you was moving the in-laws onto your property and them not getting in a cracker box, 800 square foot, something really small, trying to give some room. Wasn't so much for thinking as potentially going to rent it. I mean, I know we could, potentially it could be rented to another individual. But originally, I think this ordinance was, we was talking about was thought about for in-laws or kids. But there's no way that you can restrict who can live there. So that's why we went on with the bigger size to give more room. I know Josh talked about the water meters and separate meters. You know, my, my only thing there that I, I talked to Justin and when we talked about it out loud is, you know, that actually, is the city going to run a new tap? Are they going to go right beside the meter that's on the lot and piggyback? And it's tapped to the three-quarter line that's already coming off the main and charge the tap fee? Or are they going to go back and actually cut the pavement and put a new tapping? So we would be adding that additional cost to a property there that was trying to do something. You know, we could look at it twofold for an in-law suite or potentially a rental property. We're adding an additional cost. Because Josh is not correct. Most taps are piggyback from one meter to the next. They just dig right down and piggyback it over, set another setter there. But that hasn't been the common practice in the city. If you get an irrigation tap at your yard, it's the same as I'm talking about. They piggyback. So, but you're going to charge the tap fee and I, I don't know what the tap fees are now, but they're pretty substantial, 25, 28 hundred dollars a tap. Is that correct? For a three-quarter? For a meter, if you set a new meter there on your property, an irrigation meter, what's the irrigation meter tap fee?
It was like $700, you know? 735 or 765 or something like that. The sewer tap's the expensive one.
I think several years ago, when I was the challenge driver, my quote from the city was 14 or 16, $1,800 for an additional. was fourteen or sixteen, eighteen hundred dollars for an additional meter.
Outside the city limits?
No, in the city.
Did you do?
No, in the city.
Wow.
Yeah, I think it's, it's.
It's more than seven hundred dollars. But the additional cost is what we was thinking about, you know, if you're trying to put that accessory dwelling there, and originally staff proposed the separate meters, that just adds that much more cost to a potential project that I was always thinking of, maybe for an in-laws, not so much as I would want to do on a rental property beside my house, if I lived over to Challenge, and I was able to do this. But everybody's not gonna be thinking in the same frame of mind that each of us will have our own opinion. So I would certainly just think about the overall cost. The city's gonna achieve the same thing, they're gonna get paid for the water usage, and they're.
How would you know, unless you get a water tap, that I need to start billing you for a trash can, and, and if you just tap on, just hire a plumber and tap on, and you don't go get a tap? I mean, how do we know that, that you've done that?
How do you know how many of these dwellings already exist in the city right now?
It's six hundred for the water tap, by the way.
I mean.
For just the water?
For inside the city limits, six hundred, twelve hundred for outside city limits.
You know, all of these, there's quite a few of these that already exist in the city today. Non-conforming uses, I'm sure, but there is quite a few of these that exist today.
Well, every one that I've found had the ADU as secondary, and was never, never with the intent to be larger than the primary that already exists there. And so what I'm concerned about the sixteen hundred is if you do have something that's, even if it is two thousand square feet, and you build something sixteen hundred in your backyard, that just, I don't think that's the intent of, of, why do we have zoning? If, if you're gonna, if you're gonna allow that in a subdivision?
Well, maybe the good answer was, that was previously discussed, is put a minimum lot size that could control it, and then that would potentially, potentially keep it from affecting, you know, most people that's on an acre of land are gonna have a sizable house to begin with. Not saying all of them, but most.
Well, you've got the word or, or fifty percent.
Whichever's less.
Whichever is less.
What if we say?
Or you could just say fifty percent of the heated square footage maximum.
Well.
You can't go more than fifty percent or, and, and you can't build larger than sixteen hundred.
So sixteen hundred maximum. So fifty percent of the heated living area up to sixteen hundred square feet, basically is what you're saying.
Right, but that still cannot exceed the primary residence that already exists there of fifty.
It would just be fifty percent, that's correct.
What you're saying, if you have a four thousand square foot house.
You can build a sixteen hundred square foot.
You maximum, you couldn't build two thousand.
Correct. But you can't have an eight hundred square foot house and build a sixteen hundred square foot accessory dwelling unit. No other city that I looked up, and I looked up fifteen of them that had that. They all started out saying that these were, and, and you're right, they do exist. I mean, I know people that have a rental house, and they have a shed out back, it is literally a shed that you would put your power tools in, and they rent it out to a person, and as much as, as, you want to provide affordable housing, right? But you also don't want to allow people to be in substandardized housing either. And I'm concerned about that as well. So, one of the things, Justin, that I had talked to you about is making sure, one of the things that I saw in other cities was to make sure that it had a kitchen, a sleeping area, a living room, a bathroom, and a lockable external entrance. I saw that over and over and over.
Yeah, so we have the lockable, the rest of it, the dwelling is defined under One and Two Family Building Code, so that would necessitate sleeping, living, and cooking facilities.
Okay, so hood would define those terms.
Or sleeping, plumbing, and cooking facilities.
Okay.
So that's why it's not in the development ordinance.
And the ADU could not be sold apart from the principal dwelling unit?
Correct.
And?
Not without subdividing the lot, and it would have to meet all of the setbacks, all the frontage requirements, and everything else.
The ADU units would be required to have an emergency escape?
Uh, that would be in fire code or building code, so that's why it's not in here.
Okay, but it would still be required?
Correct.
Right.
They would require it as part of the building permit process. So it'd be building code.
One of the other things it says, it cannot be in a non, on a non-conforming lot.
So, we've got. Existing primary dwelling may be non-conforming with regard to setbacks, but the unit, the new unit would have to meet setbacks. The non-conforming law. So you can develop on a non-conforming lot, it just has to be within the realm of the non-conformity section of our development code, so we would just have to review it relative to that.
Why do you think that was a standard in other cities?
I don't really know. So, some places are very adamant about not expanding, like, the intensity of use on non-conforming lot, whereas some are more recognizing that non-conforming lots exist all over the place, and to make sure that any, that you don't increase the degree of the non-conformity as far as the building goes. So, if you have a building that meets all the setbacks, you know, on a non-conforming lot, then why not let them build it?
Is the version you have, one, one other consistency I saw was the property must, the ADU must clearly be subordinate to the primary dwelling in size.
That would be established with the fifty percent or sixteen hundred square foot maximum requirement.
And then, the property must retain a single-family appearance from the street.
I don't even know what that means, so. We cannot regulate aesthetics in a single-family neighborhood, under state law. The only exception to that is in a historic district.
And you do, I think we went over this, it has to be located in the rear of the property, right?
Correct.
And it'll just meet existing setbacks determined by the zoning.
That is correct.
Bobby, what do you think the?
So I think we've got three outstanding questions. The first is the separate water and sewer connections. The second is the fifty percent of the heated floor area up to sixteen hundred square feet, make sure everybody's comfortable with that. And the third being the, whether we want to put a minimum acreage on where these are applicable.
And Madam Mayor, if someone wants to do what we're talking about right here, they're gonna do it by tying the two together with a breezeway. So if I have an existing dwelling there now, and as long as I can meet the setbacks, I could tie this new dwelling with a breezeway, and it would be considered still one dwelling. And they could achieve the same thing. So it's something that the council, you know, this is a pretty tough decision for you here. It could happen either way, but the lot size is gonna be a big important factor in the setbacks.
Correct.
That would be the big important factor.
And I agree, I think that's gonna both preserve your character of your neighborhood, as well as provide a more sensible building envelope for somebody to do this, where they wouldn't have a house on top of another house, basically, so.
But there's no setback distance between the ADU and the existing primary house, you can build it right.
Nope, and that would be up to the people if they want to do that, it's their property.
Closer it is, it would eliminate maybe some of the rental, that kind of thing.
I would agree with that also.
Yeah. Does say in there that it's as a supplementary income in your.
Yep.
And that may even be a good way to approach it, is to tie it to the existing dwelling. Or make it within so many feet of the existing dwelling, because then you would sure enough want to know who your neighbor was living beside you.
And I think it would make the other neighbors a little more receptive to it, because you wouldn't be sticking a potential rental property up against their property line.
Exactly.
That's if you're an occupant. If it's already a rental property, somebody puts an ADU.
Then you could lose a tenant, because the initial tenant's gonna be upset that they've got somebody living so close to them now.
But if it's already an existing rental property, it wouldn't be for the intended use of a aging family or whatever.
Why are we concerned?
It would be extra rental income.
Again, I think the market's gonna set where they put it. I would let that be up to the individual property owners where they want to put it. I think we've got setbacks for a reason, we should use those. Setbacks are from property lines, not from other structures.
Do you see this in other cities in Alamance County?
In Alamance County? I don't know, I, Burlington has these. Burlington may have these.
Burlington's got a few over in Waterford.
I mean, I know they've got them, because I've seen them, I just don't know if they're in their code, I would assume they probably are.
These swimming pool houses.
It's definitely trending in this direction in most municipalities in this area, because of the lack of available land, lack of affordable land, lack of affordable housing.
Bob, do you know if you have this in Burlington?
What's there, I think it's non-conforming.
Josh, do you know if this is allowed in other cities in?
I've heard it discussed in a couple places, I know that it's just come up quite often. It's not something I usually delve into very often, it's trying to leave that in the plane, but I do know that it's come up in Meven, I don't know if they've adopted the ordinance or not, it has some discussion.
And I do know that their president in Greensboro, I know Hillsborough's got them, I know Durham's got them, again, knowing that those are outside this area, but I'm familiar with them in all the, all three of those jurisdictions.
Dad, still here? Yes.
Alley eight oh eight Sideview Street, I just want clarification, you keep saying setbacks, so what are you talking about, the side and back setbacks? What are they?
So it depends on the zoning district that you're in. So if you're in an R eighteen, you're looking at a fifteen-foot side and a twenty-foot rear, whereas if you're in an R twelve, I think it's a ten-foot side and twenty-foot.
And you're clear of that, because that's the thing, nobody would want, in a lot of areas, it's only five foot, when you're putting accessory building, and what we're calling this, there's only a five-foot setback from any property line, and I don't think anybody would want a house sitting five foot from the property line.
You're absolutely.
And I think there's gonna be some clarification on that, that's the only thing.
It's in the ordinance, it's in the ordinance that I've written, under subsection E, that existing primary dwelling may be non-conforming, however, the accessory unit must conform to all primary building setbacks. So whatever the house, main house has to meet, secondary house would have to meet. So it has to meet the full front, side, and rear setbacks that a house would have to meet. Not a garage, not a shed. It's not available for the reduction.
I just think that maybe the council should be safe on deciding to pass without, making sure that the back and side setbacks are in place to protect every home, because in the older subdivisions and stuff, because in my past, and building in the past, and me putting accessory buildings in in the past, in the properties that we owned, we always have to maintain the five-foot setback from side and.
That's correct.
Rear.
That's for.
So I just want to make sure that there's clarification. I think you're opening up a can of worms, a lot of your.
I agree with you. So that's for accessory structures, not accessory dwelling units. Accessory structures, sheds, garages can go within five, or go up to five foot from the property line. Now, these have to meet the primary building setback, so what the house would have to meet. So, the house has to be, you know, twenty-five feet from the right of way, fifteen foot from the side, twenty foot from the rear, you know, whatever the R eighteen or the R twelve specify, that's what this has to mean.
So that's if you're building new, but let's say you're taking your existing home, aesthetically, you're looking at it, it's, it's what it is, it's fine, it was built like that, and maybe that's why they have in this, you can't do it with non-conforming lots, because you could take an existing garage and turn it into that on a non-conforming lot, and I guess they're feeling like you're already not meeting the density requirements, and now you're increasing density in addition to that.
Right, so this is saying that the primary structure, whether it's on non-conformal law or not, if it, if it's within a principal single-family dwelling, that unit has to meet the primary building setbacks, in order to be able to add the accessory dwelling on it.
Okay, and then one last question.
It's no different than adding an addition.
Something that's not, if, if you're in a, if you have a lot, and it's not hooked up to city water and sewer, and you're still on a well.
And you cannot have a accessory dwelling. It has to be connected to, says both primary accessory dwellings shall be connected to municipal water and sewer service.
Chad, I'll find five oh five East Davis Street, Burlington, North Carolina. We specifically talked at planning board about the provisions for homes that had well and septic.
And what was the result of that?
Good example is, I've got six acres on Moore Street, and the city don't provide sewer. I'm on a septic. So you're gonna say that I can't do it because I don't have access to city sewer?
No, that's why I wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, because we addressed.
Yeah, so, so we, we just get rid of that, basically, just eliminate that provision.
What provision is that?
E.
E.
So, you get rid of the first half of that sentence, basically. Under accessory units within a principal single-family dwelling? Or it would be F, under the freestanding, excuse me. And Aaron did check with Burlington, they do allow accessory dwelling units in their UDO.
So E needs an ex, with the exception of, if someone, like, I'm on a septic system, but I'm on city water, so technically, he says I can't build an ADU, but the fact is, I have a septic system, if I'm, I'm on an acre, we put that one acre lot size, and I should be able to build.
As long as environmental health approves that second amount of bedrooms, or whatever, yeah, theoretically, yeah. So, that would be a very simple massaging of the language there to, to, to deal with that.
And, and you would get, you would get that before you issue a building permit, that that septic system can handle the additional ADU? Okay, so now we're at a conundrum, because you got your city engineer saying you need E, right?
If you're tapped into.
It's tapping into water.
Yeah, the, the, the city's water and sewer use ordinance and the city's water and sewer connection policies both state that if you're connecting another structure, we need another meter.
Okay, so then can you reword E to say, if the primary dwelling unit is connected to municipal water and sewer service, then the ADU? then the ADU will also be connected? Is that?
Well, the way sentence is written now, it says you have to have both water and sewer connection. What we need is an exception sentence added that if you have water, but you have your own septic system, you just need to get environmental health to say your septic system is adequate to hand, take care of the ADU. And connecting to the water, no issue there, you know?
What if you have well?
Then you don't have to worry. You don't have any of these issues. Those you, you're not using any city services.
If you, if you could reword that, basically that whatever the primary has, I guess the ADU would need to have. Would that satisfy you? Um, Josh?
Yeah, I, I guess.
And so if the primary doesn't have it, then the ADU doesn't have to have it.
Yes, ma'am. My, my concern would be that since it's been addressed that if, if when we try and enforce the something that is against that, then that's when it's a problem. If, as long as it says that if you're connected to water and sewer, that you still have to get a new meter, that's what I'm concerned with. I'm, I, as, I have very little um concern over being connected to a well or stuff, as long as they get an environmental health signed off on, I have no problem with that.
So I've got for lots where the primary dwelling is connected to water and sewer service, then both the primary accessory dwellings shall be connected to municipal water and sewer service and each will have its own separate water, sewer and electrical meters. Lots with well and septic or water and septic shall be determined by environmental health, or not shall be determined. Uh, will consult with environmental health to determine if septic size can accommodate the accessory unit.
Okay. What were the other two things that we needed to address?
And then we're going to address whether there's a minimum lot size requirement.
One acre.
So one acre.
What section is that?
Justin, would we want to say accessory unit or accessory dwelling?
Uh. With the accessory dwelling unit. How's that?
The unit could be a storage dwelling.
There stood.
That's, that needs to be changed in ten point two, five, two point four.
Yep.
And I think it's throughout that whole section.
What, what's that?
The just saying accessory units.
Oh, gotcha. So we'll just add dwelling in front of.
ADU.
Um, where are you gonna insert the acre?
Wherever you would like.
I think it would go well with F where.
Ability would be the best place to do that.
Okay.
One acre minimum?
Yep.
And then what is the um the last thing that we want?
And then just determine if fifty percent of the heated floor at sixteen hundred square foot is adequate.
I mean, I think you don't want it to exceed fifty percent and that can be as large as sixteen hundred square feet.
It could be smaller.
Or, well, the way I've got a word is the accessory dwelling unit does not exceed fifty percent of the heated living area of the principal dwelling unit up to sixteen hundred square foot maximum. That way it maximum is set there.
So if I've got a four thousand square foot house and I want to build an ADU, I'm limited to sixteen.
Sixteen hundred. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
So I think we got.
We didn't get, we didn't get the corrected version from planning board and that didn't go out again.
But it was to our benefit because the version that you have actually addresses more of the issues correctly than what that version would have had. So.
I'm not concerned about me because.
The version that was advertised and in your packet is the version we are working off of currently. That is the version I'm currently displaying on the screen as well. So I think we're okay here. It was the other one that was the problem.
Is that the case?
I do too, because there was a lot of changes. I agree.
Well, we advertised and made the changes at the public hearing that was advertised.
That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Okay. So we're going to just table this, but we've worked out all the issues.
You wouldn't, we wouldn't table it, would you?
No, you just, you know, the bottom rise rate thousand and it's a continuous and the next, next week, the defer after that has stopped.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we readvertise this at the next um, at the most convenient time for staff uh, so we can hear it at the next meeting.
Got it.
In April.
We needed to close the public hearing. Make a motion that we close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Um, you have a motion on the, I'm sorry.
If, if a staff member could not suggest something.
I'm on, I'm on a, I can.
I will, I will work with Tommy on whatever his concerns are and we will present those to the planning board and to the city council.
It deals with, it deals with address.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate you being here. Because sometimes we don't know that we're going to need you and we appreciate you being here. Um, it's a very large agenda tonight. Um.
If I can make more focus, you guys can believe that. I believe I would just reopen the hearing and change it for that time, just readvertise the hearing. So at that time, you know, you want to have a good comment. Good.
Right. Um, based on the changes that we've made, I'd like to reopen, reopen the hearing and um, make a motion that we, I was going to say table it.
Continue.
Yeah, continue the, continue the amendment uh, till next month. And um, we'll readvertise it in that uh, time period as Mr., as Councilman Hall had requested. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
That.
I don't know.
Yes.
Question secretly, but does this do anything to number nine, sorry, help with sort of a similar fashion, but
Number nine was also uh, tabled until next month and would be readvertised, I would assume.
I think the difference was is that when we got the wrong, completely wrong thing, whereas this was the one we were working on.
This was the original version and planning board made changes. And we didn't get planning board's revision. We should have gotten the original and then what planning board recommended. Um, in regards to new business, citizens request amend the traffic uh, schedule. Uh, requests from Judy Hall, um, asking city council to consider amending the traffic schedule to include no parking within the cul-de-sac of Pepperstone Drive. And I just want to remind the council um, about the conflict of interest statement, which um, members of council, it's responsible to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there's any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda item, um, number eleven. I mean, sorry, number twelve.
Madam. Madam Mayor, I'm going to have to recuse myself for many voter on this because I am the HOA president for Valley Field.
Okay.
Where Pepperstone Drive is. So it's a direct conflict.
And, and you don't uh, feel comfortable um, voting on this, right?
I do not.
Okay. Um, do I hear a motion from the remainder of the council to allow um, Bonnie Whitaker to recuse herself from the decision?
I make a motion to allow Councilwoman Bonnie Whitaker to recuse herself from voting on this.
Second, second, all in favor?
Bye.
All opposed. Motion carries. If you'll come down off the podium and sit. We usually have chairs out here, but we don't this time.
Madam Mayor.
That's okay.
Madam Mayor, I also have to recuse myself. I'm also a, a resident of Valley Field. I do not live in proximity to this property, but I will have to disclose.
Okay. Um, do you, do you prefer to recuse yourself or do you feel that you, okay? Okay. Um, I make a motion that um, that Ricky recused himself uh, from the discussion regarding item number twelve, amending a traffic schedule. Um, do I hear a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. All right, Ms. Hall, if you'll please, actually Erin, sorry, Erin first.
Judy Hall, twenty-five zero one, Pepperstone Drive.
Hey, we're going to hear from Erin first and then we'll hear from you.
I, I'll say it up for you. All right. So the item, I thank you, Mayor. Uh, the item you have before you're now is the request from the Valley Field subdivision homeowners association requesting the city to designate the cul-de-sac at the end of Pepperstone Drive as a no parking area due to safety concerns and apply signage accordingly. In order to make this change, uh, staff is uh, recommended to council to direct staff to evaluate the situation that's out there with the issues that have been highlighted by the letter. Uh, then come back with a, an amended traffic schedule, which will be the changes necessary to apply the no parking signs within that area.
Okay. And.
Okay. Um, thank you all for your time. Uh, the issue is parking at the end of Pepperstone Drive. And um, we started out with public works having a problem. They cannot get their vehicles in and get them turned around because of the parking, the cars parking in the cul-de-sac. Um, we have asked the members many times over, we've by newsletter, emails, one-on-one, talking to them, our community Facebook page. And uh, we haven't had any movement on improvement in that. Several times the, the police officers have had been called to remove some of the vehicles because they were, um, they weren't tagged. Uh, there was utility uh, trailer being stored into the cul-de-sac also. Prohibiting people from moving in and out. The post office has complained that they can't get to the mailboxes. Um, we have a disabled child in that cul-de-sac and that child was not able to be taken to school because the disability bus could not get in and get the child. So the child misses school. Um, we addressed that again. Still, we had the same problem again. Now the uh, school bo, school board has called again and says that the uh, school bus tapped one of the vehicles trying to turn the vehicle around um, very recently. Um, so we, police have been called several times. They'll move the vehicles. It'll last a very short period of time. They come right back out. Uh, when there's um, do things to be delivered like delivery trucks, someone, some kind of large, they have to pull into Covington Loop and back all the way down the street down to the cul-de-sac because they can't get in the um, cul-de-sac region. That happens all the time. So we have done everything that we can and, and I hate that we have to do this, but there's nothing else we can do. That child has got to be picked up. It's got to go to school and the bus has to be able to get in there and so does the post office. And so does the trash and recycling. They have trouble all the time. Burke Roberts and I have worked together. We've tried everything we can. Nothing has been um recommended other than just getting this done because they will not move the vehicles. They will not. So thank you.
What is recommend, recommendation from staff?
Uh, that, that's what the evaluation will result in. Um, just having preliminary conversations uh, with Ms. Hall and, and with our public works director, Burke. Um, I think it is something that is looking to be a, a, a problem and a concern out there as she highlighted with her um, with, with her view on what's going on. Um, we, we definitely have staff go out there, take a look at it. We already go out there anyway with the trash truck. So we do have a, a front row to what's going on. So that plus having uh, other staff go out there and take a look at it. We'd be able to come back with a proper recommendation for council to vote on.
Have the people that live in that cul-de-sac been notified?
No.
Um, we've put it on the um, Valley Field Facebook page. Uh, if, if they did not stop doing it, that they would put up the no parking signs. And um, it's been going on for quite a long time, quite a long time. So yes, they have been.
Okay. Um, and anything else?
No.
Okay. And if you'll come forward and state your name and your address, ma'am?
And Ma, and Mayor Tally, I just want to say until it's signed be a no parking area, you can park. So that's why you had to change it in your traffic schedule to identify the areas that you're considering to be no parking. So as it stands, you can't park there. It's just that to change it to a no parking, it requires council approval to, to be in a traffic schedule as a no parking area.
So when we do these subdivisions and we look at that, um, these cul-de-sacs or is, was that not built to standards to be able to get the um, trash truck through there to get the disability vehicle in there to pick up the child? Is, was it not? I mean, were those things not taken into consideration then?
That was before my time. I mean, the way we do it now, we run so many models. Um, it's just, I, I can't speak on what happened whenever Valley Field was approved prior. Uh, but I just can speak on what we do now and that is something that we do look at uh, for trash trucks, for uh, fire trucks. Uh, those things are like that when you're allowing on-street parking.
Is it a narrow sub, is it a narrow cul-de-sac?
No, it is not.
It's.
For standard.
We have wider, but.
Okay. All right. Hi, if you'll state your name and your address, ma'am?
I'm Brandy Moya. I live at twenty-seven twenty-two Pepperstone Drive and that is the direct end of that road. Um, I apologize. I'm just a nurse. I don't give public speeches. So this is kind of nerve wracking for me. So at the end of Pepperstone, let me start off by saying, as Ms. Hall stated, yes, they have notified it and it has been posted on Facebook as a blast. It has never been sent via mail. It has never been communicated one-on-one. Any of those kind of things. Now that being said, it was on Facebook. I'll give you that. Ma'am, sorry. We drove around the neighborhood and you can see just in that picture up there, you already have another cul-de-sac that's there. I drove around just prior to coming here. I had like a thirty minute warning, didn't even know. So this is why my words are going to be kind of just facts and statements all over the place.
Well, don't, don't worry. We, even though this was on the agenda, I mean, you know, you saw, even if you wouldn't have been here, we always try to make sure that everybody that's affected had noticed.
Yes, ma'am.
So.
We did not. So I just kind of learned real quick. So.
Well, you would have before decision would have been made. You would have had notice.
So we probably have five or six cul-de-sacs in the community itself. Um, and for some reason, this cul-de-sac is the only one targeted right now. Every cul-de-sac today, but one had cars close to it. If not in the cul-de-sac with children playing in driveways, much like my children. We are a family of nine. All of those drive above the age of, I have two that don't drive right now. So yes, there are cars in the cul-de-sac. So we've lived here sixteen years. And this is the first time that a bus has had an issue. Now this bus did come down and it clipped my son's blazer. My husband walked out. We have quite a few witnesses at the end of the road. Walked out, it busted the light. This is a blazer that was passed down from my grandfather. It's old, it's dingy, it doesn't look great, right? This is the one she's speaking of that doesn't have to have. But it does. Um, it was passed down. She clipped it. She busted the light right here in the turn signal and a piece of the bumper. My husband's like, don't worry about it. It's not a big deal. She has drove down there every day at eight fifteen in the morning with these vehicles there. Every day. And at four thirty, maybe, every day. And no problems. Just this one day. So maybe I'm not understanding, but we didn't go into any big deal about it. We just said, don't worry about it. It's not a big deal. So that was probably about a week ago. I did follow up with Alamance County. Um, I just wanted to be sure about this before I knew it was going to be a big deal because it was already a blast kind of on Facebook calling us out. Not calling us out because our name wasn't there, but we're the only ones down there. Um, so.
You're the only resident in the cul-de-sac?
No, but we're the only ones that have three cars that sometimes are in the cul-de-sac. So um, So, um, I did follow up with Alamance County bus regulations and from what we understand, they will come down. If it is unsafe, they are not supposed to come down. She has been coming down since the accident with no problems, even with the cars in the cul-de-sac. She backs up just fine. We had, had a rooms-to-go truck come, semi-truck come down and can turn around with cars in the cul-de-sac and not have to back all the way down. And we also had our AC unit delivered via semi-truck all the way down. EMS and fire trucks can actually get down there pretty well. They come from my husband, the cars in the cul-de-sac. So I guess my biggest concern tonight, mayor, is why is it just Pepperstone and not the entire area?
Okay, um, what? I can see that you're upset and, and, and emotional about it and I, and I don't want you to be that way. We are, we are here to try to come up with resolutions, so.
It kind of feels targeted, you know?
Well, you know, regardless of what's happened in the past, I can just tell you that, you know, moving forward, we want to find solutions, not problems. So it, it, to me, you know, do you have a solution to where people can come down? Do you, I mean, how many cars do you have? I assume you have a double-car garage, right? I mean, double-car driveway, right?
And four cars fit in our driveway.
Okay.
Three usually out.
And then you have, so you have seven cars total?
We have one, two, three, four, five, six, yeah.
Seven, okay. Um, is there a solution that would lend itself for both?
So Ms., when Ms. Bonnie Whitaker proposed that on days of trash and days that they said it was an issue, we actually pulled my son's Mustang up in our yard, which our yard is very small. It is one of the smallest front yards in the cul-de-sac along with my neighbors. I have two neighbors. They're probably about the same. We actually parked our cars in the yard, pulled one all the way around and another one all the way up. That was our solution when they asked word on trash days. Then when it was reported that the bus, that was never a topic of conversation until here recently. This started kind of, and I don't want to put personal issues in it, but I didn't want to really get up and talk.
That's okay. So when the bus comes for the disabled child, I assume you don't twenty-four, seven, have seven cars out there, so?
No, it's actually usually just one. By my, by the time the bus comes down, it's my son's blazer because he's the only one home from school, which was parked on, and it was actually a fluke that day because we were moving our travel, travel trailer out of our driveway. Um, and that was, he had his, and I had my SUV parked in front of my driveway sideways so that they could. But that being said, it's usually just one vehicle because usually on trash days, we're all going to work. By the time everything is said and done. So usually just one vehicle in the road. And again, just to kind of reiterate, this all began because a lady in the neighborhood complained that it was an eyesore, that it was ugly. It was passed down from my grandfather, long story, parked in front of another neighbor's yard. She asked for us to move it all the way up the road and park it into a, I don't know, a dead-end road beside somebody else's house. So this is kind of where it all started and hasn't stopped. That's why I said I would like, if this is an issue in cul-de-sacs in our neighborhood, we should really consider this in every single one of them, if that's what we.
Well, I, I'm just completely unbiased here, but I can say that I would guess that most people don't own seven vehicles in a travel trailer.
They don't, but we can't keep travel trailers. Don't worry, that's against the rules.
So, um, so it's probably not a problem except for in this situation. And, and you know, we're a complaint-driven society, so if people aren't complaining, people don't mind having one right there. But when you start, when you using your property or using the public property in front of your home is then hurting someone else from being able to have access to their property or have their child picked up.
But let me reiterate, we haven't had that problem. That child has been picked up every day. And if you want, I can give you the name of the lady I spoke about out the school system.
Well, I think Erin had a good solution for them, the staff, to look at it and see what we need to do moving forward. And I said this earlier, you weren't here, but I, I believe that, you know, the good neighbor policy should always.
We don't have that there.
Well, we need to, we need to have that there. We need to have that, and.
It's broken.
Well, you know.
I think.
The first step always, you know, you can be that first step and, and, and regardless of whether somebody meets you halfway or not.
You know, if.
You're still responsible for your, your actions. And I think, you know, you've, it's certainly been brought to you now and to your attention. And, you know, from, from a homeowners association perspective, I'm, I'm sure that people don't want to call you directly. They're gonna call and complain to the HOA director, the HOA chairman. So she has to deal with that and then, and then, you know, we just want to come up with a solution where everybody is able to enjoy their property and there isn't an issue.
And she's correct. The police were called. They came, they dedicated their time to come down there and tell us. And there's, I'm guessing there's a complaint or a file or whatever that happens. They did let us know that our vehicles were not impeding traffic. They were not blocking anything. They were not in front of the fire hydrant, so there was nothing we could do. It was, we could park on the street. The truck had its tag. It took, we took its tag off and we went to repair it and take it back out to my mom's. We brought it back and put the tag on it right away. However, it couldn't sit out there for a day without somebody calling.
Well.
And that's okay. That's okay, because that's the law. That's fine.
Let's try to come up with some solutions so that we can all be good neighbors to one another. And I think that if, if the HOA does not continue to get complaints from, so, from, from the overuse of the cul-de-sac and people being able to get in and out, delivery trucks and things like that, and you're more conscientious about making sure that you're parking on your property and not.
So would it be like a lawful request to request the paperwork that's been sent in? Because we've never had anybody complain to us and I mean, we're outside a lot.
I mean, what?
I mean, I'm just curious because, I mean, everybody else, every other cul-de-sac, cars are out, kids are playing in driveways and this, something just feels personal, I guess, again.
You are a member of the HOA.
No, I'm not.
You're not a member of the HOA?
I mean, I pay dues. I'm not a member.
Well, if you're paying dues.
You're a member.
You're a member.
No opinions can, well.
I'm, I'm just saying. By you're paying your dues, you are a member. And so that you should be to talk
Right.
to the HOA and request the information. But what we intend to do is, as Erin has recommended, we will have the city.
Go and look.
Go and look and ex, not just your cul-de-sac, but the cul-de-sacs that come from, that comprise that subdivision then.
I think that's all I'm asking if it's gonna be something.
So we're not making a decision tonight.
Right.
Point is, this has been brought forward and the next step is we'll turn on the, our staff.
Investigate.
To investigate and come back with recommendations.
You're gonna be treated fairly. The, and, and like I say, I think that if, if there's a way to have a solution, you know, we have, we deal with traffic issues all the time and if you can, when you're talking to staff or, I don't, I don't know exactly how your property is set up, if you can extend your driveway or anything to have more.
That is my piece right there. It's, it's, the driveway is very short and curved. But again, I mean, we've tried to make things.
In and then like park beside it to.
No, there is a fire hydrant right here, my driveway, a mailbox. We're not allowed to park in front of mailboxes. So that was. So.
Well, the bottom line is let us, as, use our staff to assess it.
Yeah.
And let them come back, make recommendations. And if there are issues that need to be addressed in regards, you know.
Exactly. It was just presented in a way that it didn't come, and that's what I wanted to address tonight.
Well, how do you feel now leaving? A little bit better?
Um, well, we'll see.
I mean, I.
See how it goes moving forward.
Well.
I mean, we as a council have not made a decision either way.
Right. And, and I mean, it, it's really just trying to find a solution. You, you've been there sixteen years. I don't think it's anything personal. I think you have seven cars. The reality of you probably having that for the next sixteen years is probably slim and none. I'm sure they'll
Nope.
move into their own homes and have their own lives.
Build on to that.
It will end up resolving itself most likely, but, um, in the meantime, in the meantime, um, you know, let's, we don't want it to escalate, you know, we want, uh, everybody.
That's what, I thought we were doing the right thing by not causing an issue for the bus driver, you know, and doing the right step. So that, I guess it's why it confuses me how it's presented.
Okay, well, sometimes things aren't always presented in the way you'd like them, unfortunately, but we do appreciate you coming here tonight and, uh, I don't know if the other, of the other cul-de-sac members are there, but let's just all try to be good neighbors and we'll have staff look into it and try to work with you to come up with a solution and we'll certainly encourage the HOA to do the same.
I think that's a great idea.
Madam Mayor, a question in terms of how many homes are on?
In ours, four, five, six, if you count the straight part of the cul-de-sac. It's quite packed, yes. You can see right there, one, two, three, four, five, six, right there. And we're on this one, so it's one, two, three, four, five, six as well. And even, like I said, driving down today, it's not just my cars. There's other cars even right before the cul-de-sac, kind of back-to-back as so. And Ms. Judy lives up the road.
Yeah.
And, and Madam Mayor, just listening. As the staff. You made reference to at the outset, this ten category. All of the owners of property on that cul-de-sac should have, should be advised.
I agree. That, that was gonna happen. That was gonna happen, I assure you.
If, if a broader policy is going to be established for others, then the other cul-de-sac as well. But from just, I, this part of my question is, is it a matter of the cars and the number of cars? Or is it basically something like this teenager's whole class? And that seemed to have been referenced in several ways that I, I don't think Graham has any standards in terms of what the car has to be, how nice, or how new, or how recent.
I think that's irrelevant to us, I mean.
It's irrelevant to you, but at least the way I heard the story, so it sounds like that was a part of.
Yes, that's correct. I have several messages that are not very nice from an old HOA member that's there that knows many of the ones that are here present and even on council of how an eyesore it was, that I should go park it away. And it just hasn't stopped since then. Like, just nothing. Like I said, I haven't gotten anything via mail. I haven't gotten anything in person. I have seen it on Facebook. That's absolute truth. And that's how I knew about it.
Well, um, the first question that I had before you even spoke was, you know, have they been notified? So it, it, you know, I, I agree that everybody needs to have notification and, and know if anything's gonna change, whether it's gonna be parking or no parking on your street or in your cul-de-sac. And I just think, I think there's a solution to this that can make everybody, you know, it all, it all get resolved. But just give staff an opportunity to be able to try to come up with the solution and, and we'll try to work forward so that trash can be picked up, you can have access to emergency vehicles if needed and we can have the disabled vehicle, van or truck or whatever it is.
It's a bus.
Bus.
Bus, bus.
Bus come in there, yeah. So, and, and you seem like a very nice woman. I know you don't want to hurt anybody else from being able to have access from their property, so.
Absolutely.
Let's just try to work together moving forward.
Right.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Yes.
A few things. First of all, I'm not privy to how into the vehicles look and nothing has been made, mentioned of that. I have no idea what anybody's vehicle looks like on these, this cul-de-sac. They did get an email blast put out by our presidents several times through our HOA website that comes to each home. Ms. Moyer is not a member of the HOA because she's not a homeowner. But, um, Ms. Councilwoman Chan, she does not own the home that she lives in there. The issue that here with what she, and it's not just her home. There are several other homes that all park there. It's not just one, one person. You know, there's several others. So just to let you all know. Uh, as far as the other cul-de-sacs, they have complied and we don't have any problem. We do have one. But I'd rather not mention that because Burke Robertson is, is eyeing that one because there's two vehicles there that are there all the time that's giving him problems, but you know, I'm not gonna mention that. He's working with that. Let's see. So that's far as the other cul-de-sacs and, and there's some that the cul-de-sacs do not have as many homes either. We have the one that's on Greenview. Well, two on both Greenviews. They have no homes in the middle. They, they lead down to our pond and the other one is owned by Southern City and then another person owns the, in the property there. Same for the one on chart, well. So we, actually, we only have a, three cul-de-sacs in there that have homes all the way in the circle, so. Only three, yes. So let's see. So if, if that helped answer you about, about her not being a member or whatever, she's not because she's not a homeowner. But we've done, you know, we, we're doing the best that we can.
Are you, are you, um, agreeable to allow staff to be able to look into it? Because you want to find a solution.
Because we've been dealing this for a long time and you're also not allowed to park on the grass in our homes, in our subdivision. That's under our nuisance and we don't allow that. So I'm sorry, we just don't. And nobody wants to see cars parked all in the, in the yards and muds and tracks and different things like that.
Okay.
So, and we are a single-family subdivision. We're not a multi-family subdivision. These homes did not hold but just so many people. And, and we do have, you know, elbow, we don't have just so much elbow room, you know, and that's, that's probably some of the problems too, you know, and I understand that. You know, you've got a lot of people living in the home and everybody drives. It's a problem. But we have two car garages and, uh, two, there's also other parking in that aspect too, if it's utilized.
Thank you.
But thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And my mom, power of attorney, and I am on with the permission for the homeowners association. I always have been on it with the permission of her. This is Pam, my neighbor, I'm sorry.
I live in the first house, um, going into the cul-de-sac, right there beside her.
Pam, would you give your name and address and?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please speak into the mic, please.
My name's Pam Smith. I live at twenty-seven eighteen Pepperstone Drive.
Okay.
But like I was saying, I'm in the first house on, on the cul-de-sac, right beside her. I've been at that place about three months long when she's been in her place. And I've never had a problem with her or anything. The house, not next to her, but the, the one next to her, she's not even home. And even when she is, she don't, she don't bother anybody. So she's not gonna say she has a problem with her either.
She actually tells my kids so that they're not bothering other people to park their vehicles in her driveway.
She would like to have them parked there because she's not there. I mean, she's an, she's a nurse.
And just so you know, this hasn't been a problem for a long time, since they just started driving, some of them this year.
Well, it's, I think there's a resolution. Just let the staff look at it and work with you, but, you know, I think, don't let your emotions, you know, you're, you are a part of that development and, and, you know, we appreciate you being here, Graham, and I think the HOA sometimes gets put in a bad situation because they have to enforce. because they have to enforce rules and deal with complaints. And, you know, I think maybe the best solution is just let staff do this rather than-
Come down there.
Rather than have neighbor against neighbor, you know? It, it causes animosity, and we don't want that. And, and, um, so I appreciate you both being here. I feel like it'll be resolved and, and, and to, to your satisfaction as well. Just give them an opportunity to take care of it.
No, I would appreciate it because, again, we haven't had any trouble, it's just certain.
Well, we appreciate it. Thank you so much, you have a good day. Um, so, we're going to, um-
Make a motion, close public hearing?
Make a motion to, um-
We're having a public hearing on that one.
Don't they? Okay, so we just need to make a motion?
To-
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Once they're, once they've taken action.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna make a motion to, uh, table this until staff has had an opportunity to, um, try to work it and find out, find a solution to the satisfaction of everybody's. Um, and, um, they'll be able to come back. So, if we can postpone this until next month.
Yeah, I'm just gonna make the motion that's here, but that Erin mentioned. Madam Mayor, I move, we direct city staff to evaluate designating the cul-de-sac in the Pepperstone. There's no parking, however, I wanna caveat that, to examine the other cul-de-sacs. And we'll make it based upon your recommendation as, of the staff as to what the need or if it's necessary or not. The important thing is, we have to recognize that Public Works needs to get in there with trash trucks, fire department, school. You know, those are the, the primary considerations in regards to traffic. So.
I'm sorry, I was making a, a motion initially to table it because I thought that's what staff wanted Tom to be able to do.
Allows them to do that.
He went with the suggested motion, which was for us to evaluate it, to come back to council.
Okay.
With the addition that he had in mind.
Look at the other cul-de-sacs as well.
But you're not making it no parking right now?
No, no, no.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry, I thought I heard you-
Making a motion for staff to evaluate the parking situation in all of-
The cul-de-sacs of that subdivision.
Valley Field.
All right, I'll second-
I would, I would also recommend the whole neighborhood because road widths also dictate who can park on the road in that whole neighborhood. And I, if I'm not mistaken, those roads are pretty narrow. Um, so just, you know, value, to, to make it fair to everybody, evaluate parking on the street in the whole neighborhood. I know that's more work for you, but I think that would be fair to everybody that lived there, not singling anybody out.
Okay, I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Mayor, excuse me, I don't think part of the motion, uh-
So, the question would be, when we come back with the-
I didn't table it, so I didn't do that. But I can assure you, before it comes back on to the agenda, um, we need to notify, I mean, we would, before we take any action, we'll be notifying the property owners. Where I can assure you, you're not gonna have that on any issue.
We would bring back the recommendation and then go from there.
Right.
Then we, you would bring the notification back, then we could notify-
Right.
Then we could table it at that point until the next meeting, until everybody was notified.
Right.
Okay.
Didn't have public hearing.
Yep. Okay, make a motion that we bring back the council members for the remainder of the agenda.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number thirteen, road closures, special events, um, special events committee has reviewed the following event application. And we're going to ask for Mary Fawcett to come for downtown development coordinator.
Mayor, council, before you this evening are five applications wherein the applicants are requesting to close the one hundred block of West Elm Street. One being the event Ride Out Child Abuse. The second being the Graham Food Truck Rodeo. The third being Thursdays at seven. The fourth, Dino Day Festival, or excuse me, Dino Day Spring Festival. The fifth, Graham Oktoberfest. And in addition to these five, there are two applicants requesting additional street closures. The first being Slice of Summer, requesting one hundred block of West and East Elm Street, as well as North and South Main Street, including Court Square. The second is the Family Abuse Services Car Show that is requesting the one hundred block of West Elm Street and the opportunity for the spillover into, um, Court Square if needed. And let me just say that, um, the one hundred, um, block of West Elm Street, there is an adjacent city lot that is also included with that street closure. This has been a, a healthy agenda and a long meeting. There are representatives for each of these events that have come here this evening to speak before you that I hope you will grant them the opportunity to speak to you about their event and the details. But I'm happy to answer any questions at this time that you may have.
And, um, I did not, um, do the agenda this past, uh, month because I was out of town. Um, the staff put together the agenda. I am, apologize, I didn't, I think they did it not anticipating that people would have to sit here. Thank goodness the other things were withdrawn. Um, because, um, it was a two-hundred item agenda, I apologize. Um, if I, if I would have known, I could have tried to move it forward. I'm so sorry, um, about that. Um, the, one of the things that I had a concern about was, um, for Family Abuse Services, the car show. Um, the one hundred block of East and West Elm Street, North and South Main Street and Court Square. I don't know why that's still, because I was told that it was just West Elm Street and that it was the parking spaces around the circle, the inner circle of Court Square.
That's, that's what I just said, that for Family Abuse Services, they're requesting the one hundred block of West Elm.
But that's not what's on here.
So, so I've spoken to the applicant, and they have their board, like from the February twenty-third to today. And whenever their board met, they agreed that North Main Street is a mute point that they won't access, um, the one hundred block of West Elm, the adjacent park, municipal parking lot. And then the opportunity to spill over into the Court Square parking spaces if deemed, um, necessary. That was the same request that they had last year. A representative is here from Family Abuse Services, but if you'd like to speak to them directly, you can.
So, it, when you say Court Square, it's not descriptive on here because I have the old requests on here, not the new requests, but it's the inner circle of the Court Square. Is that correct?
The, the parking spots on the outer edges of Court Square. So, in the corners around each of the north, south, east, west pieces of Court Square, that is the requested opportunity. That if they are so fortunate that they exceed the space allotment on the one hundred West Elm and the adjacent parking lot, that then they could have the opportunity, working with, um, the public safety, to park cars around the perimeter of Court Square.
So, this is what I would like to suggest. I would like to suggest West Elm Street, the city parking lot on West Elm Street, both up and down West Elm Street, and the inner circle of Court Square, um, before you do the outer circle of Court Square. Because the Asian restaurants there, the, 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 the verdict is operating on Saturday. The, um, um, the furniture store is operating on Saturday.
That's Paul Crotts' loading areas in that corner there.
Wits is operating on Saturday, um, this, there's just all, all around.
Can I make a suggestion?
If it's on the inner circle, it's not gonna, it's, it's still gonna allow those business owners to operate their business.
But then we have a safety issue. So, if you have cars that are lined up around the center of Court Square and you're allowing traffic to go around that circle, when we have patrons walking back and forth to look at the cars, because that's what they do, you have a safety issue of them crossing the road.
Right. Can, can I make a suggestion? I've done multiple car shows downtown. We, and we eventually closed all of Main Street, North and South. But initially, we closed West Elm and Maple, down to the, that's Maple right at the, yeah, from the corner there at West Elm, from the Sheriff's Department down to the, uh, um, Pine Street. That allowed cars, I think you could put seventy-eight, seventy-nine cars, if I remember right. Uh, we also requested, uh, Mr. McIntyre, I don't know if Mr. McIntyre showed practice law right there. He has the parking lot adjacent to the, um, public, the municipal parking. You can put another eight or nine cars in that parking lot, maybe ten. Um, therefore it eliminates-
Is that a gravel lot? Is that-
No, it's all paved, it's all paved.
Okay.
Um, I would suggest that instead of trying to do where people, for safety reasons, that you would not come around Court Square at all because you're gonna have to block those spots off the night before. And therefore, all day long, whether you need them or not, nobody can park there.
Actually, that's not true. Last year, we did the exact same thing where we blocked off West Elm, the parking lot and the four corners of Court Square. And because we used our rain date because of the weather, we didn't have the attendance.
Right.
So, at ten AM, if those corner spaces are not used, then Graham PD removes the block, the blockages to those parking spaces. It worked fine last year.
Yeah, I'm just saying, when we did it before, that, that worked really well. There's nobody crossing eighty-seven, there's nobody crossing traffic. You can bring them down. And, and the event we had, it was for the cook-off. And we eventually closed it because there was ban, you know, stages on the other side of Elm. And, and, um, the car show grew to, I think we had a hundred and fifty-eight cars the last year. And we took up all of, all of Elm, all of North Main, and half of South Main. Um, but until you get to that point, I would suggest maybe looking at going down Maple. And you can close that off.
Is that DOT road or is that a ground?
No.
No, it's not a DOT road.
And it doesn't affect a single business.
Doesn't affect a single business. Um, Sheriff's Department comes in the side if they need to come in and out. Detention centers on the, on Pine Street. Um, i- i- it's a good alternative. You can, you can have, you can probably put almost a hundred cars there and not have to get into the eighty-seven.
And so, we're allowed to park them out of the flow? Because the parking would go this way, we're allowed to do them like this?
Yes, yes. If that street's closed, I went out there, measured it off, we put tape on the road, and backed them in.
And it's no issue with fire, EMS, any of those people?
Only if you park in the center of the road. Can't park in the center.
So-
You gotta be able to have a fire truck to get down the center. My, uh, I'm speaking from past experience. We originally parked in the center of the road. We had to move them because it was, it didn't allow access.
So, are you saying use both sides of Maple or just the side that's adjacent?
It's both sides. Maple's wide enough to park cars at an angle or even straight in, and put maybe another forty or fifty cars down there. I mean, we've done, we've done it, I've done it, we did it for several years.
I just don't, I mean, I understand the business in court square not wanting to block the parking spaces, but we're bringing people to the city of Graham.
Right.
And it's bringing people to traffic on those sidewalks. Um, I know our volunteers and a lot of our attendees ate at those restaurants and being yours, um, that Saturday that we were there.
I mean, weren't you there? I'm just saying, we had to earn our keep. Once we got to where we had the, the volume, then we went and put, put the petition.
So, what do we do if we have the volume that, so, what if we already have that volume? Uh, that's what I'm saying.
Right. I mean, you can-
The reason we didn't have it last time is because it was a rain delay and there was another, or a rain date.
Mm-hmm.
And there was another show that was scheduled for that.
We want you to do, uh, we want you to do the car show. We want it to be very successful. Um, but I think along the same lines, we have to all work together to make sure that, um, businesses that are, this is the only access that, um, people have to their, to parking and for their customers. And, um, has anybody reached out to the-
Haven't gotten that far yet.
Right, to the business owners?
But what, what I was getting at, you would, you would gain more parking spots by going down Maple than you are in the corners around Court Square. To, to speak to your issue, if you had more cars, your overflow would be, obviously, you would wanna start, start at Court Square.
It's a good, it's a good alternative for this show.
I mean, you would start at Court Square. This is how I would do it if I was setting up the car show. I would start at Court Square, put, start putting your cars in from, from the courthouse. That way, when the cars are coming, people are coming around the circle, they're like, oh, there's a car show. Work your way down, fill up in a municipal lot. I would ask Mr. McIntyre if he could use his, I'm sure you probably can. And then make the left turn and go down Pine as overflow. You're gonna gain more spots and be able to put more cars by doing that than you are in the corners around Court Square.
So, just the, from West Elm to Pine?
Yeah, go down and make the turn.
So, actually, Joey, I think what I'm hearing you say is when you found the municipal lot, that would be from Harden to West Elm. Like if you were to stop at the drive-abren coming out of the municipal lot and then feel, is that what?
The one that, the municipal lot that goes back-
Yes, to Maple Street Tavern.
Yeah, it goes back around behind there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, from that drive-abren back to West Elm.
Well, I would go from the corner of West Elm down, not go back up the other side.
So, West Elm, West Elm to Pine? You would not put any in front when you come out of the municipal lot?
I wouldn't put anything in front of Maple Tavern.
Okay.
No. I'd block it off there. I, I, to me, that's a better alternative because I think you can put more cars than you will if you overflow into Main, and there's a safety issue.
So, uh, just to, just for reference, I mean, how many cars did you do when you did, I mean, he, like, the car shows in the past? Like, he's the one that did. He, he knows everything there is to know about car shows, and they are hugely successful. So, if you can tap into him, he-
And I, I know, I think Philip Gillum was a friend of one of the ones that was helping. And he had asked me a couple last year and to help him, and then I never got a call back. And, and I really didn't know much about it because it, I didn't see it really advertised a whole, whole lot. And for me, which I don't follow the car show same like I once did either, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I, I think that's a great, good alternative for you. Good suggestion.
Okay.
Madam, um, just two other blocks that you might consider or ask. The Regis Pradek Block is adjacent to the city's lot. It was a little right way before me, but it's right kind of in the, what I say, I'm a business owner, sadly.
We, we inquired about that originally, and there was, I don't remember what the reason was, because it was a county lot. We couldn't use it.
It's probably liability, a lot of times it comes down to-
Issue, I, I remember, because we wanted to use that, and it was, uh, Farm Credit was right there behind it, and-
And there's issues with accessing the county property.
Yeah, and, and Farm Credit didn't want us to do something there as well. And, and I, I think it's somebody different now, so that may be an alternative for you to be able to use their parking lot instead. Because I don't think it's Farm Credit, I think it's, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know what it is now, they, they may be receptive to that. And you could probably gain another twenty-five, thirty cars there. And it would be adjacent to everything you're doing.
And the other county lot, but we have the same problem is the sheriff's lot.
They, that was definitely, you know?
Off limits.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Real quick, Captain Flood, of course, to point out a couple of things. I heard a discussion, first off, I wanted to address, I know it was mentioned about the inner circle of Court Square. Having done and planned many of these events and been involved in that for years, I would totally be against the cars being around that inner circle instead of the outer circle. And the last year, when we discussed this event, it was for the, right there in the corners, or it keeps people on the sidewalks. If you put it around that inner circle of Court Square, that means people have got to cross the traffic way, and that is a safety hazard, and I would be strongly against doing something like that. Um, I liked the idea that was presented as far as with Maple Street. However, Maple is DOT maintained, so we would have to reach out to DOT and get that approval. However, I have found, um, previously in the past, DOT approval for Maple Street, it's not as bad as trying to ask DOT approval for eighty-seven because it's not a major highway. Um, I would, I, I think, um, in planning this, I know, um, Joey, you, I mentioned- Um, I would, I, I think um, in planning this, I know um, Joey, I mentioned about you going between Pine and Elm. Um, I'd be more inclined to say probably between the, the Elm and Harden side of it for a couple of reasons of one. If you do that block, you know, of course, we are a couple of years ahead. You are blocking then um, limiting access to Sheriff's Department parking lot. Now, they can't come in off of Elm Street, but it does put some restrictions in there. Because you gotta think, even if you block off that part there, we're gonna have to close that intersection there at Elm and uh. Elm and Maple, which affects that whole block. It has, it has more effects through there. Um, and I know they talked about using the city parking lot. If you use that other block. Now, of course, I know it would affect Maple Street and I think that's be a conversation maybe have with the owner there, Mr. Alves. But at the same time, it gives you flow out of that city parking lot into that street there. And it cuts back on the amount of risk that you would have and it could potentially leave it to where. That intersection right there at Elm and Maple could still be open for left-hand turns. Without closing off that whole intersection and potentially blocking, I mean, affecting multiple blocks around it.
When we did it before, we did not block that intersection. We, we capped it at the end of Maple and then capped it.
Which we, which would, you could do that even with what you discussed.
That's what we did. That's what we did. We had one of Adams' tow trucks.
I would leave that as suggestions of being able to come out of that city lot into that block over there. And then it possibly potentially also open up for maybe the use of the Presbyterian lot as well. Another thing to consider that side where it doesn't have as much impact.
And there's, there's something, something with the Presbyterian lot. We, we, it's been so many years ago. Um, there was a reason why we didn't do that and it was part, I think partially access to that county lot and with the Presbyterian because they have. Uh, I know what it was. They, they could potentially have a funeral. They could potentially have a wedding.
Right, right.
There's different things that, that they may want their parking lot for and we could not block them.
Which either, either one could be, you know. Looked at, I think that's planned and everything, but I did that. Want to say that the pushing it to the inner circle there at Court Square would definitely be not an option we'd want to take. And that's one reason why I didn't pursue that last time.
But they also use part, the two hundred, part of the two hundred block of uh, West Elm Street.
I mean, that's depending on what the council approved, but you know, um, still, either way we go and everything, I just want to make sure we were aware of that as a council. Before we uh, went forward approving something that we would still have to go through DOT on Maple Street.
At, at the time, Griffin McClure was, I think, on the city council. And he goes to that Presbyterian church there and he couldn't get him to let us block that driveway, so. That, that was the reason why, because of potential. They, that's why we went the other way. Um, the Sheriff's Department didn't have a problem with that because they had access multiple other ways into their facility.
So just some suggestions though out there.
Um, is there an opportunity to. Reach out to the ride outside of use and then the other events to have those applicants who are here. To speak on their behalf or do you want to take them each individually and make um. Take action per event. The way it was presented in the packet was um, a totality. Of approval, but you can always, you know, make a condition per that event and identify the roads for the. Family abuse services event. It's just up to the council of how you guys want to proceed.
Are, are all of these West Elm Street with um, with the exception of um, the Slice of Summer and. Um, Graham Oktoberfest?
So, so there are five that are um. Occurring or the request is for the one hundred block of West Elm Street and then the adjacent municipal parking lot. And those, those five are the Ride Out Child Abuse, the Graham Food Truck Rodeo, Thursdays at Seven Concert Series. The Dino Day Spring Festival and the Graham Oktoberfest. Those are the five that are exclusive just to that location.
Okay, so at the last meeting, we talked about um. Um, I guess I don't see him here tonight, but um, the uh, is it? The person that owns, runs Coffee Depot, Jerry, Jerry, is he okay with, with these road closures?
When I've had conversations with him, yes. When the rec department staff has had conversations with him, yes.
Okay. All right, it's just, you know, twenty road, twenty road closures every Saturday. Is he open on, it's?
Yeah, and then he closes hopefully at three, three. And so he was like, this doesn't affect me. I close at three, I'm not open on Saturdays. They asked, and then they asked if he would be interested in even staying open. To capture the traffic and he said he didn't have interest at this time.
Okay, but we've, and there's no, nothing else on West Elm other than yourself, right? Do you have a?
Well, there's Little Brother Brewing, there's. Yes, the Ver, I'm just saying Passion, the Almonds News isn't open on Saturdays.
I have no issue with these that are nonprofit organizations that want to do fundraising and so forth. My question though is what is the city's policy on allowing private businesses to close streets? Two of these are for the Little Brother Brewing Company. And I'm just kind of questioning why that would be something that the city of Graham would close the street for. My other question that has happened in the past, I assume that all of these events are free events, that there's no charge for any of them. For the public at large. Uh, that seems to me to be a prerequisite, but I, but I still question, I mean. You know, the Almonds News might decide we want to close the block and have some party. I don't know, but uh, I just.
I think, again, good neighbor policy. I think that if, I think where that might. That wouldn't work necessarily on, say, South Main Street because it would, it would effectively close businesses or. Not allow access to certain businesses if the road was closed because it would detour people. They wouldn't be able to park, they'd have to park somewhere else and walk over um, to access those businesses. Um, but I think that if the, the organizer has um, gone to the different. Business, this is how it's always been done that, that I know of, even when we did the car show. We went and the council always said, have you talked to the businesses? Have you talked to the owners? Because the car show was done by the Business Association. And I even remember when we did, I mean, this has been, I'm old enough to remember this, but uh, when we did the downtown concerts. We did not have the support of the verdict. We did not have the support of um, Carvers on Elm. And I remember specifically going in there and literally begging them to just give it a chance. And see if it will work and, and see if it will, you know, um. Be a good thing for their business and um, now they, you know, they're very welcoming of it. I mean. We just don't, you know, it has to be a balancing act between, this is the only parking that these people have. And to shut somebody down on a Saturday.
I, I fully agree with all you're saying. My, my question is, why is the city having business-related? Closures for an event? In other words, I understand Slice of Summer Recreation Department, Thursdays at seven. I'll address a different question which I've raised with you all before, but in other words, but I just don't know why we're do, why the city would be doing. Um, Little Brother Brewing or frankly, the food trucks for that matter. Why, why would the city? Be having an interest in, in doing those? And so, I mean, I guess it's a fundamental policy question, but I just don't get it in terms of what. The city of Graham or its taxpayers get out of doing things that are clearly for the profit of individual businesses. And all for them making individual profit, but I don't see why it would be done at the inconvenience of. People who just want to drive down Elm Street on a Saturday.
Well, um. I, I attended Little Brothers Brewery Barrel and Bottle Graham Oktoberfest. Uh, last year in September. Um, I got schooled on because initially I said Oktoberfest. Isn't that supposed to be in October? But apparently they do it correct and it's supposed to be done in September. So I appreciated it. I, I really enjoyed it. I had, I personally don't drink, but I have family members that attended and, and. Um, I attended. I certainly enjoyed myself. I thought that it was very well received in the community and a lot of people came and attended. I did think it was good for business. The cost to the city is putting up barriers. Police, which I believe that they pay for through um. Through the business pays for it. I'm just giving him an explanation. Um, Porta John's, which I think they also pay for and is part of the special event setup. And trash pickup, I think the, the, the city workers come by after an event like that because we do have a. Excessive trash down there, but that generates good things and goodwill. And if we have community leaders and business leaders that want to do an event, as long as it's a good neighbor policy. As long as you're not hurting your neighbor and hurting someone else. I don't, I personally don't see the harm in allowing them to be able to do that event. It doesn't seem to be a um, a problem for anybody else on that street and.
I'm, I'm merely raising the question of what is the policy? If the policy is the city is going to allow it, that's great, but I have a feeling there's some other businesses that might be interested in doing something. In the future, if the city of Graham is gonna say, well, this uh, beer place on Elm Street can have a, uh, the whole block closed down. To do some event, I think somebody else might want to do that as well.
I mean, I, I think the, the cost to the city in, in these particular events. I, I don't know what someone might have planned in the future, but I think the cost to the city in the particular events. That are being presented, not the city-sponsored events, not Slice of Summer and um, the concerts and the um. And the, well, I don't think you have the one for the Halloween event on here yet, do you, Mary? No. Um, but those city-sponsored events, those do cost quite a bit of money for the, for the city. Um, but they are city-sponsored events, but a business putting it on there, they. I think the city did address the issue especially of police because we have limited resources for police, so. Um, they started making organizers pay for that.
Yes, I think that's a good idea. And as a taxpayer.
Okay, so the picking up the trash and the, and, and they also pay for Porta John's and putting out the barriers are nominal expenses. And if a business owner wants to do something in the downtown that's a positive event and uh, and brings. Attention and its nominal cost to the city, I don't see, I personally don't see a problem with it.
I'm not gonna labor that point anymore. Uh, Madam Mayor, the other issue that I brought up at your last meeting or your special meeting. Um, and I've discussed this subsequently with some of the recreation people who came by and actually. They didn't seek permission, they at least told about their plans and the ability to come tonight and speak on it. The concern I have is that um, on the agenda here, it says to close them for the events of the uh, Thursdays at seven. Between five PM to eleven-thirty. And I don't have a problem with that. The problem I have had in practice in the past is that the city begins to come around at two or three o'clock in the afternoon. Wanting people to move their cars out of the street and, and stop having access to Elm Street. Thursday is our publication day. We're not interested in shutting people out, those who might come in, in to the news office. And so that continues to be a concern that that five o'clock date or time gets fudged. Earlier and earlier, so it seems.
And so in response, I have spoken with the recreation staff. Um, because what was put on the application was for their street closure request to take place at five. Um, I was not informed until the special meeting about the three o'clock parking spots. One of the discussions from the SEC that um, we have at Public Works that has worked in other municipalities in the county. Is to have signage that could go in the middle of the street that just says, by order of the Graham Police Department, no parking this block. And then it would say five o'clock in accordance with the street closures. Um, it has been a practice. You are correct. I was um, informed of that. The recreation staff said that this year. In conformity with what they put forward, they will not do that. And the rec department is here. They can speak um, to their practice. And the working with Public Works of having the signage in the middle of the streets identifying to the vehicular stra- traffic. That at five o'clock, there's no parking. The street is closed.
Yeah, I just don't ever, like, I think I mentioned this at the special meeting because there was a, I got yelled at very much. Um, being on the council about staff coming in and telling, not even going to the business owner, but coming to. Coming to customers and telling them they had to leave. That just does not sit well with any business owner, I can tell you. And I, and in rec's, in staff's defense. You know how the grapevine is. I'm sure that it wasn't intended to upset people. You know, it wasn't their intent to do that. And I think that um, we have very responsible rec staff. Um, but when it gets, you know, it gets addressed, we need to all be working together to.
Yeah, because there's a lead time, right, for setting up for an event. And then if there is that one or three cars that are. Locked within the event, then when the owner of the vehicle comes back, their expectation is that they can leave. And then that creates a safety issue within, within the event that unfortunately, you know, there is a street closure that has been approved. And we can try and help you get you out, but there may be the potential that you're landlocked because of the event and the safety of those who are participating.
Yeah, I do think, and I think I talked to you about this, is that when we've had to close our private parking lot for events. Putting signage out there the day before was very helpful. We tried to do it like a couple of hours. But some people are there all day, so they didn't see it that morning. So I, I'm just telling you what's worked for, for me when I've tried to. You know, I know it's not a road closure, but I think that that does work a lot better.
And I've been informed that staff does that um, signage, you know, issues. I, I think the solution is doing the vehicular traffic signage in the middle of the road. And then also for your recommendation of just increasing communication, the rec department, myself, held meetings in the fall. With business owners, you participated in that. Janae Parrott participated and then we had Wells Fargo. So it was lightly um, attended. But the, the message was clear to communicate with the business owners. So aside from having that face-to-face meeting, the weekly emails that I send to the business owners. We have flooded this year from staff's perspective about the events that are coming up for this year. I understand where you're coming from about the procedures of how council wants to hear and make that final approval for street closures. With the concerts, the, the practice of clearing that street has been a challenge. So I know that the recreation directors is standing to my right. If you don't have any further questions for me, I'll hand it off to him.
So ju- I began Thursdays at seven, I don't remember how many years ago now. And yes. Two business owners were not very happy when we first started that. Council gave us permission to close the streets, but soon thereafter, they were sponsoring. Concerts, paying for one on their own to add more down there. Practice in the past has been we've put up our plastic barricades on the sidewalk facing. Parking areas um, where the Passion mural is now and um, where the verdict patio porch area is now. To get those streets blocked off, or those parking spaces blocked off first, those signs say, please have your cars removed by five o'clock. Street's gonna be closed for Thursday and seven concert series. Now, I haven't done Thursdays at seven concert series personally in some time. Cannot speak for staff who no longer works for the recreation department, but these ladies have been out in the street. And they assure me that they have never gone into a business prior to the street being closed to ask anyone to move their cars. I'm not calling you a liar, but I'm not saying that that's a practice that we actively pursue. So we do everything that, that Mary has talked about. I don't agree with her about putting this cone in the middle of the street. Ms. Flood, I don't know if you would agree, but West Elm Street's a pretty narrow street. We get some trucks parked along there. And I don't think having a cone or a barricade in the middle of that thing, whether it be a skinny one or anything else, how it is, is gonna be a smart move.
Yeah, I, I support Ryan on that. Uh, with the size of Elm Street, it would be difficult without creating a traffic hazard, put something physically in the middle of that street. Uh, when we've done this before in working with the rec center, when we did uh, Pumpkin Bash. We went down there and we actually had signs that we put inside the planters everywhere we possibly could down through there. I, I can remember coming in at, you know, six o'clock in the morning before traffic get down there to put them signs out, letting people know, hey, this park is gonna be closed. And so the signage does work. I don't know that the solution would be putting anything in the middle of Elm Street because of the size.
We do have that little triangle right there where the yield sign is. That might work there, but I agree. Like if you've got like something pink all the way down, it's gonna draw your attention to read that sign and to try to move your car at five o'clock.
Yeah, so I can assure you that we do our best day of to not inconvenience any more folks than we have to. I can also assure you that it's a lot. I can also assure you that it's a lot more work for us to do this, all these events downtown than it would be to simply go to Bill Cook Park, as we did in twenty twenty-one and have these concerts. We can set up the stage at any point we would like to. The bands could come in at any time during the day they would like to. And we're not inconveniencing a soul. But I would like for our department to be an economic driver for downtown businesses. So that's why I started them downtown and I will fight these guys because they want to be simpler and a lot less chaotic at five o'clock. Though we will continue to have them downtown. But if it's a consensus of whomever, we can quickly move it back to Bill Cook Park and, you know, kind of eliminate a lot of this stuff. And we won't inconvenience downtown business. I'll be glad to answer any other questions. I guess, progress or process related to closing any of the streets for any of our events.
Well, I think that, um, what the, you know, there was a lot of, um, people were very happy to have the concerts downtown. Um, and the residents, I hear from the residents saying that they want to have the, uh, concerts downtown. And so that's where, I mean, I feel like, you know, West Elm Street, um, the, I think the brewery would think that they probably win from that and um, anybody that set up down there, even vendors that come and set up down there win from that. So I think if you have a exist- a successful event on West Elm Street, you can win on that, on any event that's going to be down there. Um.
Tax dollars to have bands come that aren't going to benefit.
I agree, but if it's going to be where we're hindering business, then, you know, we'll have to find that balance. So we have an option. I mean, we, we can go somewhere else, but again, we could have initially started it in a park twenty years ago. But I chose to start it downtown for a particular reason.
I agree. I think that's where everybody here wants it.
Um, in regards to, um, Slice of Summer, when does that event start?
Emma, I'll let her answer all those logistical questions.
Good evening. Slice of Summer is from four until eight on June eighteenth with the rain date of June twenty-fifth.
The, the street closure time?
The street closure time is proposed at one P M. on one hundred blocks of North and South Main, as well as West and East Elm. One until nine.
So it's going to, what all is coming in? I'm sorry.
For that event, what all, what all are you setting up?
We will have different inflatable attractions, also water attractions, water slides, as well as sprinklers on West Elm Street, food trucks, different various vendors, um, and performing arts attractions, as well as food trucks if, as well. So there's a lot of, um, moving parts that go into it. And it's not as simple as just pulling in and plugging up your bounce house and it blows up. When you're including the water, we also have to work with utilities to tie into the water downtown. So that is a process that takes time to do that alone. And then what if there's an issue? You have to have the buffer time if something's not working with the water or something's not working with the bounce house. Getting all these vendors in, the performing arts, the food trucks in to that space does take time. And with a three hour turnaround, that's very impressive. Um, when the event first started, they closed the roads at twelve noon and saw that they were able to do it quicker. So they bumped it back to one P M.
So it was earlier, it was?
It was earlier initially. And once it had been done and they saw that they had ample time with some wiggle room is when we bumped it back to one P M. to close the streets rather than noon.
Which is a practice we do for all of our events. We are continuously evaluating these things. And if we can simplify and make it more efficient, then that's what we do. We are fully aware of the inconvenience that this, these events cause, but in my mind, the benefits outweigh some of those inconveniences for the city as a whole.
That's the, that's also the sentiment that I got, um, when Brandy and I went downtown last week from the overwhelming majority of businesses, owners and managers that we were able to speak to. Um, very po- gave us very positive feedback on the events that closed the streets, specifically stating that their businesses do better on those days. I did have a couple complaints that I made notes of as well and addressed those complaints with that individual. Um, and to see how we can alleviate those concerns if it's possible.
Yeah, I think, um, I think we, we talked in that meeting that Mary and you and I had and, um, from people that I have talked to, I think they, they love the idea of recreation being a form of the downtown, um, um, events and things like that being downtown make the, the feeling, the social aspect of having that downtown. Um, I think the only complaint that I have ever really, um, kind of heard, um, in recent years is just the, the time period of closing the street and actually like, um, doing the event, you know, they're like, well, it only took forty-five minutes to do this and for them to set up and why did they have to close the street like four hours? So, and, um, I, I know that they don't know everything about setup, but I think just trying to go back and reassure them. Look, there's a lot of moving parts here and they're trying to get everything done that they can get done. And they're working to try to shorten that time as much as possible, but they also want to be able to start on time so that they can end on time. They don't want to start late and then people feel like they didn't, you know, like with October, with the Halloween event, it's only three hours, right? So if you start late, you really.
And I'm glad you referenced, um, the, the Pumpkin Bash because I did share, um, comments I had received with Emma. And she was very amenable to those and implemented the recommendations that you and I talked about, I talked about from, uh, Mr. Crocs for Graham Furniture. This will be the first time that Emma will coordinate over Slice of Summer, um, due to COVID. And so as you heard, like the reevaluation that takes place, the reaching out to the businesses, one of the things that the practices of the red department is that they submit or, um, push out an evaluation form. They want to hear, um, good, bad, and ugly based on the event so that they can always evolve and improve. So that you are good neighbors, that it does work not only for the participants, but also for the business district.
That's correct, because I've made it, um, a very strong intention of mine since I've started here, I've done it in previous positions as well to go face to face to all the businesses leading up to events multiple times. So for instance, for Pumpkin Bash, I went to every single event a minimum, or every single business a minimum of four times, once to hand out posters, once to hand out a letter about street closures, a third time to remind people of street closures, and then the day before the event to, again, remind business owners of street closures. So when you mention of, you know, city staff going into the businesses and asking people to move cars, I can't speak on previous employees, but what I have done, yes, I've gone in two hours ahead of time to say, hey, remember the street's closed at five, make sure your people know. Because it was six o'clock, we were moving people off the street as the event was starting with thousands of people walking downtown. So that's why it's important for us to bridge this gap of communication between all event, um, sponsors, but specifically for my purposes, the rec staff to the business owners so that that information is readily available and out there for the bis- the business owners, managers and their staff and customers.
Well, thank you very much for coming tonight. Um, is there any other comments from council members?
Mayor, before we sort of move away from the red department, can we just go back to the, um, Thursdays at seven? Just to get clarification, if the practice of the red department is three o'clock, is that the request for the time of the street closure? You know, I'm sure that we had had some conversation about the fact that the application said five o'clock, but it sounds like three o'clock may be what they desire. I just wanted to hear.
So I'll address that.
Okay.
Um, we do, it was my practice. And again, I, I can't speak because I'm not on scene anymore, but for the years that I, I set up Thursdays at seven, it was my practice to set those barricades near where the mural is now and over where the verdict patio is now. I would use those two barricades per side to, at two, three, four o'clock, when I could block off those parking spots as they became available. That way, we kept West Elm Street available for the flow of traffic up until five o'clock, which is when we shut it down. I blocked those parking spots just to give myself a chance to get our truck and trailer in position to be able to unload and set up a stage in fifteen minutes. So then the band has an hour and forty-five to set up. Anybody that's ever watched a band set up in an hour and forty-five, they are not very happy about it. So they are pushed to get it done in an hour and forty-five minutes. Brandy probably gets more requests than she wants to know about or hear about to, can we do it earlier from the bands? Can we close at four? Can we close at three? That's why they loved being at Cook Park so good last year. But my practice has been we block off parking spaces in the high volume area for us. We allow traffic to continue to flow. And for me, I, that has worked the best in my practice over those years. Can't speak for Brandy or for previous staff who are in the position at this point. Again, I'm not there every day now.
And Mary, it was just a typo for Thursdays at seven that said West and East Elm Street. We fixed that.
Yeah, we're not doing all the two sides.
Um, so I don't know what you have in front of you because I'm going off of my staff report. And my staff report is number three, Graham Recreation Parks, Thursdays at seven, and it's under the heading of the one hundred block of West Elm for Thursdays at seven.
Okay, just in the agenda, we had West and East Elm. Um, I'm sorry, did you have something?
Yeah, so we still follow how Brian's always done it.
Yeah.
Um, and we try to keep the streets closed for a minimum time. So that's where that five o'clock comes in. And it is crunch time for us. But we try to work with the downtown businesses and work with that five o'clock. But yeah, we have fifteen minutes to set up that stage. And it's usually myself and one to two other people to set up that stage in fifteen minutes. And the band is already unloaded on the street, ready to go.
And the other, one closure is for us to get our truck and trailer, the other closures, um, those parking spots for the band to bring in their equipment. Because they're already unloading stuff before we even start unloading the stage half the time and setting it on the sidewalk.
And the other piece of that is, and this is great, is that at five o'clock, there are people coming to the concert, standing on the street, ready to set their chairs up at five, and then they leave and go downtown.
They help us block off the street half the time.
That's good.
And then they go eat.
So, um, if there's no more questions, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, um, the advances listed with item G. Being, um, amended to say that for the Family Abuse Car Show to be the one hundred block of West Elm Street, the city municipal lot, um, the Maple Street, um, from south, the South Maple Side of Maple Street down to Pine Street, um. And that's agreeable to Family Abuse Services. That's agreeable to Family Abuse Services. Okay, um.
And you got. We'll present it to them and then we'll, can we table that one or not table it, but contingency on, can we, can we just can have a contingency on?
Prove it as the motion stated, and if, if she needs something different, then we have plenty of time between now and October.
We don't have plenty of time to market the event, though. So as it's already been spoken to, he wasn't, he didn't see the marketing of the event and us to publicize it, we need ground running and people to publicize this, this car show. By attending the car show, car shows, cruising, things of that nature. But this is what y'all approved. Y'all can approve it tonight and I'll present it to my board. And if they say no, we will just be, but finding a different place. I can't speak on behalf of the board.
Okay.
I mean.
A drastic change, thank you.
I, I was just, um, and you, you can advertise it, it's just you'll have a car show downtown Graham that day. You don't have to say from this block to this block. If it's downtown Graham, they're going to know to come to the courthouse and they're going to find the car show.
But if my board says no to your, your proposition,
Hmm.
I can't advertise it down.
But you, when will you talk to your board? Tomorrow? I mean, you're not going to print flyers tonight or tomorrow. Um, you know, you're not going to print, print flyers out.
No, what I'm saying, and if the board doesn't agree with what you all recommend and approve, then we have to start the process all over again to find a new, downtown Burlington to do it. Sheriff, I got a, the sheriff's department letting this, the courthouse lot there, there are other options available, but we this whole process that we started in the city of Graham, when we were doing it a different way and it got changed in the middle and now we're doing it this way. So you have to understand, I'll present to the board and if they think that's the version we want, we will do it. If they say no, I have to start the whole process. To, to do our car show, which will take a.
I, I think you'll be successful if you do it down, down Maple. I really do. I mean, we, we did it and it was successful. I know, uh, yeah, we want you to have it here. We just, I mean, this, this is a safety issue as, as much as, you know, anything. Because regardless of if you put it in the corners, you're still having to have people walking across Highway eighty-seven in the middle of the day.
And, and I think downtown events are really successful when you leave Court Square and Main Street open because you have twenty-some thousand cars a day that pass by there. So people that are just going from A to B maybe don't even know your event's going on. And, you know, they're going to stop because they see, oh, this event's going on. I mean, we, we want you to be successful and, um.
And I offer my help to help you be successful if you, if you, if you so choose to take it.
Take him up on that offer. He's excellent. Um, so I make that motion. Um, do I hear a second?
I'd like to measure, ma'am.
All in favor? All opposed? Um.
Four each.
And now we're going to go to the boards. Okay.
Chairman, may we take a five minute recess?
Sure. And make a motion where you say, let's be back in.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
I saw you shaking your head.
Yeah.
Okay, if everybody will get back, we'll call the meeting back to order.
Okay, boards.
All right, we're going to discuss boards. Have a list, I'm sorry.
Right there.
Okay. So I've heard from some council members about what they're interested in. Um. Okay, what are the ones that someone told me you, you wanted rec? I'm, I'm sorry.
No, I, I would be interested in possibly the Historical Museum, HRC and Planning Board. I think the Planning Board would benefit me as a learning opportunity. And then HRC as well. That's not one of the ones, uh, I was on the list that we got. Okay, I'm sorry, it's just those.
I don't understand why the lists are different as well. I don't know what, why is there a recurring theme here, but.
I thought I got a different list.
Because we also had on the list that Aliments County Community Services Agency. And me and Aaron were scratching our heads saying, who was on that? And when do they meet? And.
I think it was a jury board, so if you want to take that one, we'll comment off on it.
Does anybody know when they meet?
We were going to give you Community Services.
I will take it tentatively.
And Audit Committee.
Um.
Yes, I haven't heard that from the, uh, from Annette, who was the person I emailed. She was the executive director. I would suggest if you're not comfortable, not because none of their stuff is online to kind of tell you what, what days they meet and all that. I would probably hold off on that one until we get more information. If you're not comfortable, you know, putting your name beside it.
Is that what the economic development?
Um, no, the one that, uh.
Community Service?
Mm-hmm. I'm not familiar with that one. And I could get a whole lot from the website and kind of give you more information on it either.
How about the Aliments County Regional Boarding Committees? I won't see it on there. Up one, oh, sorry, that was the title. The upright.
Oh, no, that's.
That's just the title.
That's just the title.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So, um.
What is the recreation? I didn't look at it because I didn't think it was something I was interested in, but.
The Recreation Commission? It is.
Parks and Recs?
Parks and Recs.
You just sat in on the Parks and Recs meeting or?
They have a great board, I think.
What, when, when do they meet?
Monthly.
What day?
I don't have that memorized, but stand by.
I'll do it. Um, I'll do it. I was just looking at things that I thought would give me a better education of how things work. And I was looking at that. I'm out for that.
Second Wednesday of each month for Recreation Commission.
Okay, who else can do recreation? So Joy, which, let's ask you which ones you want to do first.
Uh, of the ones that were listed? The list is down, is that the list now? Uh, Historical Museum is appealing. Post Commission.
Okay.
There's, I think the Historical Museum is the fourth Monday at six thirty. And, uh, HRC is the first Tuesday at six.
Bonnie, you had said you liked the Historic Resource Commission. Would you, um, be interested in the rec board if, because he can't make the rec board meeting and him take the Historic Resource Commission? Or, or do you have strong compassion? Because I don't think he has a strong compassion for it. But, um, do you feel strongly that you want those two boards' appearance and the Historic Resource Commission?
Um, I had just offered to do those because I came off both of those boards. So I'm familiar with them, but, but no, I, I, I can try the Recreation Commission and then maybe the Appearance Board.
Okay. Are you fine with that? If you do the, Joey, you do the Historic Resource Commission and, um, Bonnie does the Recreation Board. Okay. And. I have to be on the Audit Committee. That sounds like a real fun committee there. Um, and then I think the Cemetery Board. Wow. Um, it's like a lively party every month.
H, the Community Service Agency. I mean, uh, I'm sorry.
Alternate.
Alternate.
Okay.
And I'll take the lead on the.
TAC.
Yeah.
Okay, and Bobby, you're interested in the.
Economic Development Committee. The alternate to the, uh, feed my triad, regional council and primary on the Transportation Advising Committee.
Well, are you just going to leave me on the audit in the cemetery? Only one I really wanted to be on was the Economic Development Committee, Bobby.
You can.
It doesn't mean, it doesn't mean.
Leading the EDC, it only makes sense to be part of that as well. Unless you want to lead the economic development.
How many members did we set up for that committee?
Where, I think y'all went seven.
Seven might be hard to fill.
Yeah, I agree. I, I, I think five for that specialized group would probably be a good number to try to get enough people. High quality people to get there.
Yeah, for the EDC, if we're talking the commerce part, we will need a representative from Mevin as well as from Aliments County. So that would make seven.
So the Transportation Advisory Committee, when do they meet?
So you're the lead, Bobby, on the feed my triad council, right? That's a nice gift you got.
No, he got it. No, he got it. He's got the lead. I'm, I'm not. Yeah, but you got the gift.
What in the world? Um.
It helps when you have friends.
Okay.
What's missing, what's lacking?
I guess just deciding. So i- if I, if I'm on the Economic Development Committee just as a liaison, he can still come as long as another council member doesn't come, right? So it could still be just like an alternate. So you could be, if I can't be there, then you could be there.
Okay.
Does that sound okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's the only one I really care to be on, but I'll do the cemetery. But it doesn't. Okay, that's the only one I really care to be on, but I'll do the Cemetery, but it doesn't meet, but.
Well, the issue we have with Cemetery is that it hasn't really been a functioning board and.
Yeah.
So.
It doesn't need to be.
Yeah, and I think, I think it was sort of a hesitation to even get that board back up and going because it's.
Why'd y'all put it on the list?
It's not, it's not, well, it's not on your presentation here. It was on your list because it was one that Chip always signed up for.
Y'all are hilarious. So, okay, well, all right, so just scratch that, but we can still meet about some cemetery issues, right?
Yeah, and I think it was proposed that we come back with some language when Jerry, when Jerry was here one time.
Yeah. Okay, so correct me if I'm wrong. Appearance Commission, Tree Board, that would be Bonnie. Historic Museum, Graham Historic Museum, that would be Joey. Historical Resource Commission. Joey. Recreation Commission, Bonnie. Aliments County Community Services Agency, Ricky. Aliments County Economic Development Committee, Jennifer with the alternate of Bobby. Audit Committee, Jennifer. Piedmont Triad Regional Council, Bobby. Piedmont Triad Regional Council, Alternate, Ricky. Transportation Advisory Committee, Ricky. Transportation Advisory Committee, Alternate, Bobby. And then does the Planning Board? No, they don't have one.
Yes, that suggests that you have a liaison because especially use the issues that'll come up.
Right, right, okay. Okay, I'll make a motion that we pass that. Slate. Of Commission and Board Assignments.
Just clarify again, Piedmont Triad Regional Council, who's the regular?
Bobby. Me. I'm the primary. Yes.
And for Transportation, it's the reverse.
Yes.
Here, second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Um. And we'll ask now for members of the public who signed up to come in and speak, and I will go to the first person that signed up, which is Brent Kinderly, who has hopefully patiently waited.
He is left.
Okay, Chad.
My name is Chad Huffon, 2198 Cherry Lane. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. We just asked that if you would direct staff in some fashion, assistant manager or town planner to begin looking at the documents we submitted and planning board receipt of them. I don't know if Dean is still here, but we've submitted some documents for Cherry Lane for the review at the Planning Board stage. And we'd ask that you give staff some direction on what they should do when that comes to you. Thank you.
So these are documents regarding a proposed overlay district and reversion of the future land use map along Cherry Lane and Governor Scott Farm Road back to the 2020 Plan. Staff has added this as a, an informational item on the planning board's agenda. And then this will, they'll make a recommendation and we'll come to council and seek guidance on this. Staff's recommendation would be to handle this as part of the future land use update as well as Unified Development Update. But I believe that the owners in Cherry Lane's vicinity wish to have a faster timeline on this, so that's something we'll have to resolve with council.
They want a faster timeline?
Than what would be proposed under a future land use plan update, which would be the ideal time to address this sort of information.
Was that scheduled for like June?
Depending on if we get the funding, then we'll send out the RFP as soon as possible and we'll get running as soon as we can get a consultant schedule in place. But that would be staff's preferred method of handling it.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure that when we meet about that, that we get as much, we make a concerted effort, not just a letter, like. We have to get people there to participate to get.
We are, we are looking for as much public involvement as possible in the process, so we fully anticipate several community meetings in different portions of the committing, uh, community. That anybody can attend on different days so that we'll have it available for multiple people to come.
And if, and if someone cannot, or someone doesn't want to come to a community meeting, but they want to have input, I want us to.
I think we should open up a survey of some sort or like an open-ended question type of survey where people can submit responses and, and input into the plan.
Well, clearly some of the property owners there do not get along, and I just could see them feeling not some kind of way about not wanting to come to be attacked or be, you know, to feel uncomfortable and awkward about coming to a meeting.
I think we could very tactfully handle it with an anonymous form submission, either through our website or through Survey Monkey or some other means. I'm sure that we can accommodate both.
I just want everybody to have a voice in regards to that, but we will make sure, Chad, and please reassure Brett Hennerley that we will make sure that he's noticed on discussions in regards to that update. Jim Demming, 209 Albright Avenue, Graham?
He left.
Okay. It's in regard to the city water. Does anybody know what that was about?
He just wanted to show us how bad the water, the color of the water that he gets out of his faucet. But the fact that we've got money for water infrastructure. So.
How are we coming on our third grant?
Oh, so.
What's our percentage of getting that?
Well, EDA and the college feel very good about it. It matches what they're asking for, so fifty-fifty grant for proportion of water. We also had a good, had a good discussion with Fish Water Infrastructure on other water equipment. We'll be coming back to you in April with some projects and numbers.
So if we get that third grant, then that will give us the thirteen million that we need to replace the, the, it's a ten-inch water line now that would go to a sixteen-inch water line all the way from the water treatment plant into back into town. And what improvements would the end user see?
The end user would see less fluctuations in water pressure. They're going, as a city, you're going to see improved drinking water quality. Let's see, though we portions of the town, which will see improved and longer fire flows. You will see that the town will, in the event of a major failure of the distance of the maintenance line, the city will have a better, better ability to supply.
Wonderful.
Where does this water coming from?
From the city, from the, from the Grand Meven Water Plant.
Our water, our water line is over seventy years old.
Is there gonna be improvements at the plant to increase volume for the sixteen-inch pipe?
No, the plant has the ability to pump, the plant has the ability to pump more than what we can take into the.
Okay. Increase volume, reduce pressure, and it affects a lot of things, so it's.
Okay, is there anybody else on the floor that'd like to speak?
The intersection down there with East Elm and East Harden, there was a vote about a year ago on whether you wanted a roundabout or a standard intersection. So what one, just.
Roundabout.
Roundabout, okay, that's what I thought. This week, they started surveying and measuring off and staking where the sidewalk's gonna be. And evidently, the sidewalk is gonna come in front of Children's Chapel Church. It's going to take over half of their yard up. So literally, you step out their front door, you may get hit by a car. This is a historic black church. It was built right after the Civil War. The bricks were made on-site. I just can't believe they are going to disturb the land for this church to put a sidewalk when it could go across the street. So it's, anyway, in my neighborhood, people that I'm in touch with, with this church, because I live next door to it, there are people who are upset.
Yeah, I.
They chose this church to do this too.
Yeah, I tried to call to Children's Chapel. I left a message there. I did reach the people at the, um, at the gas station there that's been remodeled there, that little Quickie Mart thing, and talked to the, to the manager and to the owner of that property and got them to, I sent them, emailed them the survey. But it, you know, and I certainly, you know, gave comments and about it because the way, the only two options, I didn't, I liked the roundabout better, but the, the cul-de, the Walker Avenue would be completely cut out. You would not, no longer be able to.
They're gonna leave a turn-in there for him into his parking lot.
No, I know, but you won't be able to come down Walker and go on to Elm Street.
Fine, because if you've ever had to take kids to school down that street, it, it's a nightmare in the mornings because of traffic trying to turn in and out of Walker.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with that, but I'm just, what I'm saying is that like where the, we're also where the road comes down Elm Street, like there was two versions, and one took, completely took out his gas station, gas pumps. And the other version didn't, but I don't know what version ended up getting passed, you know.
The standard intersection took up a lot more land. I think that's why.
Well, I was just thinking like, I know that we have an ordinance that says that we don't want to have cul-de-sacs dead in roads there. And if you already have the, the roads coming in, is there not a way to be able to have Walker Avenue come into that circle, make the roundabout wider, and have that, them also come into that circle? Because the danger is people turning left, right? The, there's no danger in someone turning right. So, you know, UPS did a big study about this several years ago that I read, and I, I thought, how, this is crazy how much, how much money they save from, they have a policy that none of their drivers can turn left. And I thought, this is crazy, but when I actually read it, I thought, this makes actually a lot of sense. But when you're at that, when you're at that interchange, being able to turn right and not stopping traffic on Elm Street to try to turn left because there'd be a median in the roadway, that, that, all of that made sense to me, but it didn't seem like you were able to change anything on there because the topography there on Elm Street's challenging. And why are they trying to take, take the man's pumps out, gas pumps out to put in a, to put in the sidewalk if we're not gonna put in the rest of the sidewalk? If we are gonna put in the rest of the sidewalk down to the school, then maybe that.
I want to talk about the church. This is a historic black church that should not be losing half their front yard to a sidewalk because of the conversation.
Um. Maybe that's something that we can talk to them. We didn't make any decisions.
It was a, you got to vote. About a year ago, you got to vote.
It's EDOT is making.
The people.
EDOT is making.
And they're putting in the sidewalk too.
This is a side of the impact on the church. These roundabouts, it's a new fad, the transportation people are trying to put in everywhere. And it is a disaster in practice, especially in churches like this, where one of the factors. Got industry with eighteen-wheelers.
That's the biggest complaint we get out there is the eighteen-wheelers. Everybody complains that the logging trucks come downtown, but they can't make the left-hand turn to go down Harden Street to the interstate that they want to do. They say, well, if you push the stop back where the cars come up from the interstate, if you push that back, they can make a left-hand turn, but they can't make a left-hand turn because that stop, it was just poorly, poorly designed. And Mr. Holt, who owns, has that Atlantic Packaging building there, Dona Yorn, he complains about the trucks and the traffic, and, and he deals with, he has trucks and traffic there. It is business. So yeah, I mean, I, I gave input as well, but I don't know. I've, Aaron knows that I've kind of harassed him about it, I think. Because I do think we need to have a better solution. I completely agree with you.
But it, just in this age of George Floyd and Black Lives Matter and everything that this nation has gone through for the last two years to finally get some recognition, and, and we're gonna take out half of their front yard. They're gonna lose.
We don't, don't get it.
I'm not saying.
We are not doing that at all.
But whoever is with the Traffic Advisory Council now, Bobby, Ricky, please go back and talk to the DOT about this because they're gonna lose their handicapped ramp. They're gonna lose. I mean, everything's gonna move to the back of this church. The front of this church is gonna be non-existent. Their pull-in and pull-outs for their parking lot is gonna be even steeper than they are now because they're literally going to go like parking lot and down to the road.
Are you sure they're not putting sidewalks on the other side too? Because the plan that I saw had sidewalks on the other side too.
They've only measured our side, my side, and the church side.
I would, I would have to look at the plans.
Yeah.
It's on both sides.
They, now they ma, they measured up to Flanagan between Barbara and your, your first house. It's where they quit measuring there. But it doesn't take in nearly.
Like I had to put up a retaining wall because it's like you'd need a billy goat. I mean, you, it's, it's like, it's straight up. So I don't know how they're gonna do that. It's just like the, the challenges that we have down Elm Street, right? Going to the, going down to the school. It's, I mean, you go from a mountain to literally a flood plain. That little church sits down in that little flood plain with that creek behind it, and then you go not even, I don't know, five hundred foot, and you've got that house sitting straight up.
Right.
And way taller than about twice the size of this room in here. I don't.
I just, I just think this church needs some consideration because.
Actually, I had invited Mr. Fox to come tonight to do our invocation and our prayer tonight.
He doesn't live here. He lives in.
No, I know, I know, but he was sick and he couldn't be here, so I would have loved for him to have been here because we would have had, had an opportunity to talk to him. But Mary, Aaron, can you give me the contact name of the person there at DOT that we could talk to to find out exactly what's gonna happen? And I'll see if there's anything that we can do. DOT, they're like, this is our road and we'll do what we want to with it. But we can, maybe you can get, maybe you can say something, maybe we can get the pastor to say something, maybe we can get people in the congregation to say something. And do what we can. Try to at least have them take a second look at it.
All right.
Thank you so much for bringing that up. I greatly appreciate it. I didn't know that they were already doing that, working on that. I wanted to, I'm sorry I didn't get to see Tim. I wanted to, I'm sorry I didn't get to see Tim Covington tonight. I thought he was going to be here for the Arbor Day, but Dean Ward's mother, Judy Ward, passed away. I think it was day before yesterday, maybe yesterday or day before yesterday. And just won't, I don't know where he's going to be planting trees, but we wanted, I wanted to buy a tree in honor of his mom and she was just a wonderful person. Such a a tough a tough business person. She, she made it, she made it in the modular home industry in a, in a very very competitive, yes, 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 over on Mevene Street, that's right. She's a tough old bird. She was, she was wonderful. We loved her so much and yeah, she's just a, a super nice lady and just ask y'all to please remember Dean in your prayers and, and his family. So I just wanted to mention that and not let that get past me. Mary, do you have anything? Aaron, you're holding up progress. Darby?
I, I do, unfortunately. I've been working with Megan on a revised code of conduct for the city employees as well as implementing a code of conduct for all the boards and commissions in Graham. And I think that's going to Lori, and it's, you said next week possibly have a draft.
Yeah, so the code of conduct part for employees will be written into our new personnel policy revisions we're going through, which will be longer term. As I understand it, the code of conduct that we're working on is for elected and appointed officials, and we will have a draft by the end of the week, hopefully, and would possibly on, be on the April council agenda for consideration.
I just wanted you guys to know that was in the works.
Thank you so much for your hard work on that. I greatly appreciate it.
Our employees are governed by our personnel policy, which is where we address any personnel-related issues with our employees.
Well, I think they were going to, they're already in the process of doing a revision. I may have misspoke because we had talked about that earlier. But they are in the process of, I, I suggested it, but they were already in the process of amending that and working on a new update on that.
Correct.
So what we're, I guess what we're going, moving forward with is code of conduct for a-
It will not be a month or two. The entire personnel policy is being rewritten. As of now, there is not a separate code of conduct section in there, and it will be included in the new version.
If I may add to it, in talking to Megan, we're also working at bring up to date our disciplinary policies. So that's all part of the updating of the Personnel Manual. The discipl- disciplinary policy is one recognized by the state of North Carolina. And I feel that our current disciplinary policy needs to be updated because there's a lot of vague language in it. And so between the code of conduct and the disciplinary policy, we need to wrap that all together versus piece-me.
So I guess what Tom's saying is that he's interested in that coming before the the council to be addressed. Megan, what is your time, your timeline, or is there a way to be able to do that in a timely fashion?
For which part?
Well, I guess.
Employee that you were talking about.
Yeah, we were only able to secure quotes from one individual who's even got any capacity whatsoever to help us with the personnel policy rewrite. The Cog is full, the MAPS group is full, and some of the other folks, like the individual who just did the Mevene Pay Plan, has retired completely out of the business. I think with some of the COVID money that's out there, all sorts of vendors are just very, very busy. They're at capacity. So we're working through it. They're going to have an onsite meeting, I think, in this month, in March, but it could possibly be around the beginning of the new fiscal year before the entire policy has been rewritten.
How long is it?
Sixty, seventy pages maybe, off the top of my head. The last time it was updated, I believe, was 2014. So it, it will take an extensive amount of time to go through and do it properly. A lot's changed since then.
Well. I think Joey had a concern. I think Bobby had a concern about updating the language in regards to insubordination and discipline. And so if you could make that a top priority to work on that, even if it's in-house, and get that said, and then that be part of the overall project of updating the employment policy, I think that that would I guess alleviate their concerns and not put undue pressure on you. I mean, you can't get the entire thing done by next council meeting, but it, could you just work on the section? Could we, could you and HR work on the section, just like the section about that specifically?
Right now, there is no code of conduct section specifically in our personnel policy. You know, our code of conduct is governed by things that are deemed to be inappropriate. You know, that would be disciplinary related. We don't have a separate section that is labeled code of conduct, which is standard in a lot of personnel policies. So I mean, right now, that doesn't exist at all, but if there were some behavior that would warrant discipline, then it would be addressed in the discipline section as it exists now, and, and I've talked with Councilmember Chin about the state's disciplinary policy.
Very detailed.
Yeah, I think you sent it, sent a copy to me.
Yeah, and Councilmember Parsons also provided an example of a code of conduct language that would be relevant for employees, which has also been sent to our consultant. So both items have been submitted to be included in the personnel policy rewrite.
Okay. Um. You have a who on the council here can, Megan, maybe you could speak to this. I know there's a recurring concern from staff about the insurance, the health insurance, like what we can do, maybe some inventive things that we can do to try to make the benefit package better. And specifically focusing on the insurance. When does that come up for review or?
So our health insurance and all of our other benefits are on an annual basis, which runs on our fiscal year. We've already issued RFPs for brokers. So we're in the process now of trying to select a broker who will then go out and shop insurance for us as the city.
I didn't see that on, I looked at the RFPs this week, did-
Yeah, I think they were due last week, maybe?
Oh, so it's already out?
Yeah, yeah, they've already been submitted.
Okay. Um. Okay. And Joey, you do insurance. Would you be interested in working on that?
Don't do health insurance.
Okay.
And me and Megan had spoke about that, and I don't know that I would be any more valuable than just somebody off the street, because health insurance and casualty liability are two completely different things.
I didn't know if you knew. I know you're in insurance, so.
Right, yeah, I'm property and casualty. I'm not-
Well, Megan, if you need any help with that, I guess I'll be the liaison. I want to see us do something.
I'll be glad to help if I can, but I, I I don't know that much about it.
Health insurance is a different animal.
Okay. Ricky, did you have anything?
Oh, ma'am.
Megan?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Appreciate everybody being here tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, ma'am.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.